Okay, so we are in the morning. Calling to order the January 14th meeting of the Manchester Essex County School District. So welcome everyone, just like we have some people joining us. I'm gonna open it up to public comment, but with a quick reference that this is a conversation. I know everybody's probably here to talk about the Eagles Nest, so thank you for coming. This is a conversation that we've been having about a week. We had, I believe, last Tuesday. We were notified of it. We had a conversation in our collaborative group with the towns on Friday. And we're looking forward to speaking with all of you guys tonight. And I know that there's a solution we can all come to that will be a manifold to everyone and a good working situation. And with that, I would open it up to public comment if you guys wouldn't mind taking a quick look at what kind of the guidelines are. We don't usually have a lot of speakers, so I just, you know, want to let everyone know that there is kind of an MO to the public comment. And if you guys, if you have something to say, please raise your hand, introduce yourself, say where you live, and then all questions should be directed to me. And it's really more of a comment, and then we will talk about it after everyone makes their comment, I think.
More to the informational side of what we think or the next steps that we have to take some of the budgetary issues and the, it doesn't matter if it was a creative post.
So why don't we do this? We'll do public comment and just take the comments. And we won't really have a deliberation until we get to the end where we will be discussing it in a larger format. And then probably some of your questions will be answered, and then we'll enter into a little bit more of a kind of dialogue.
Do you want to sort of give a presentation to kind of show your kind of sort of area?
Well, no, I think we have the, we have the presentation later on, and then we can kind of have a little bit more of a dialogue. But with that said, I will open it up to public comment. I see you back there, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kate Koch-Sungquist, Dodge Street in Essex.
Kate, if you could stand up for the camera.
I just had more of a procedural question to start. I'm wondering, I know that as of at least this morning, that the Eagles Nest conversation was item number six on the agenda. I'm wondering if there is a board member who might make a motion to move that up on your agenda.
I will tell you that we're gonna go really quickly through this. We don't have a lot to talk about other than the budget, which hopefully you guys will stay for, which wouldn't happen after it.
All right.
So we don't have a lot to really talk about, just a couple of good things. I don't imagine that taking more than tops maybe 15, 20 minutes.
Okay.
So we'll do it really quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. With that, let me open it up for chairman's report. Just a quick, just FYI, a kind of a question for the policy and communications side of it. The town has hired or engaged a communication and community engagement person, Tiffany Morletta, who's also a mom in our community. And I thought it might be a good idea to liaise with Tiffany, just to kind of talk about, you know, communication from the district, communication from the town, and also, you know, we have Emmy Hubba. So maybe if that's a concerted effort in terms of a broader message, we all want to get together and send, that might be worth, I think, looking into. There is one point person that, you know, we can all...
Yeah. I'm not over the course of this.
I thought you were...
It says Rachel Eric.
Oh, Eric, okay, great. So, all right, I have Tiffany's email. Why don't we, great, so why don't we talk after the meeting? I think it might be not a terrible idea to put you guys together, Tiffany, maybe Emmy Hub, and maybe the town, and possibly come up with some sort of, I mean, I know it's further out, but maybe some sort of unified message, some sort of, you know, we've talked about this in the future, in kind of, I'm sorry, in the past, of kind of broad brushstrokes of, you know, maybe one mission statement for the whole community. So maybe that could be the starting process for that, and just open up a dialogue. So I will give you her Manchester email, because I think she's using her Manchester email.
Okay. That is good advice.
Yep.
Can I ask a question? So, I'm assuming that there was an hourly rate that we would be involved, right? I don't know. Eli, can I ask, if we start to talk to Tiffany?
Yeah, I mean, that's fair. Travel a little bit louder.
Pardon?
What was the question?
So what's the, I mean, I'm assuming there's an hourly rate that we would be inferring that we need to use Emmy. Hi.
Oh, I hadn't discussed that at all. That's something that you'd have to talk with the town district. I actually was thinking more lines and lines of you folks wanting to coordinate messages.
Yeah.
If you want to actually use it as a shared service, that's something to consider to talk about. I would open up discussions with the great fetish field person.
Okay. My thought was that we would kind of coordinate a message and maybe come up with a message, you know, maybe, you know, if this could be the start of a message, a joint message from the communities, you know, working with Emmy Hub and the school district. And I think that's...
I think it's a fair conversation we should have at a later time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I just wanted to let you guys know that I kind of started this process. So there we are with that.
That's big.
But communities are too.
Yes, yes, yes.
When I hear community, it's, no, I said community, I said larger. And it would be shared service, some different...
Yeah.
But just, you know, there is a person there, and we've been talking about this for a while, so I throw it out there. All right, do I have, moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? We don't have any minutes, and we don't have any out-of-state travel.
So...
Exactly. We will have a wonderful meeting. Okay. Great. Any discussion? All in favor? I'm opposed. Any abstentions? All right, motion carries.
A second to a serum need kind of back.
Okay.
You take your time.
Got it. All right, elementary facilities, Caroline, you have our primary school.
We've not met, but is there any progress on anything that was kind of a between-the-two meetings, you know, stuff? I know we talked last week about the change orders we addressed, that I don't think there's anything new that's happening.
They poured the concrete. There were lots of trucks out there that one day in the morning, working with some neighbors.
Lots of trucks.
Any concerns with neighbors?
No, no. It looks like they were lined up down there. It remained quiet in front of their eye pass one way in the morning.
Yeah. Wow, so, wow. Thank you. That's awesome. Very good. All right, finance committee, that's us. Let me look at my notes.
I left at nine, so, um... We talked for quite a while about the Eagles Nest, and I think kind of had a good discussion and prepped for this meeting with the, Jason was there, who's our facilities director. We talked a little bit about budget, and then I left, so I don't know what else happened about budget.
Uh, I don't think we talked about too much beyond that. No, we didn't, because I think we, we talked about Eagles Nest for a lot of it. Church fields, did we talk about that at all? Were you there?
That's gonna, we're gonna cover that in budget and capital.
Okay.
So, we did talk about the borrowing question for the refinancing and the small part of the debt. Yeah, I don't know what the, if even if you want to...
Well, just that we saw an opportunity to pursue some refinancing, middle school base for debt, there are three issues, a regional issue that's 25 million, one is 5 million, and the other one's got 2 million. And we already remunerated 25 million, so 5 million dollars has an opportunity to be refinanced, and it is currently beneficial in terms, we're kind of watching the market when that, if we're going to do that. Yeah, you would potentially save about, I think the number was about 22,000 dollars a year. Much smaller than 100,000 dollars per year savings that we got, but it's just related to the size of the bond. So, at some point, we'll get a refresh from the financial advisors, based on market conditions, and if it looks like it's something we're gonna hop on, we could get a, that means a, a community with support from the same working for this work, the same middle school, Memorial School project, and prior, most middle school issues. So everyone seems to agree that, based on market terms, it makes sense. And we might act in the next, market, of course.
The only other thing I wanted to note, just since we have Essex folks in the room, is that the finance committee for the Town of Essex meets on Tuesday nights in his meeting tonight. And there are some serious pressures on this town budget. So, you know, our budget is highly dependent on what the towns can afford. And so, right now, I think our budget is 50% of the town budget in Essex, and it's probably the same in Manchester. So, when we talk about budget, we do it in the context of the two towns and how they can manage the costs of the district year-over-year. So there are conversations about a long-term budget plan, right? But I just think that, you know, it helps when, when parents are also engaged in what's happening at the town level, because you have context for why we make decisions that we make at the school level. So, some of us are getting old and don't want to do this job anymore, so someone has to take these roles. So I think it's important for people to start paying attention to what happens at the town level. So I'm inviting you to start engaging early on in the budget process in Essex, so that you see why, why decisions are made the way they are, and why we aren't going for overrides when we ask for a new public safety building in an elementary school. So, just, it's just a little public service announcement, and I'll shut up, but it's a good opportunity to...
Thanks, Amy. I think that wraps it up for finance committee.
Yep.
And with that, nothing from policy, nothing from negotiation.
Right.
Pam?
I'm gonna do a goal report next week, so I can keep it brief, so we can get on to business at hand, because in reality, between last week and this week, most of the work has been focused on budget and, and then the Eagles Nest. But of note, this Friday, one weekend for the kids and families, we have our annual professional development day, where we do morning sessions by teachers, for teachers. We have a combination this year, we've tapped into our partnership with the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth, and they have, they are also practice engineers, but they have specialty presenters in areas of, I could just call it the social emotional umbrella. So our focus for the morning is a combination of workshops, we have, not many people, they can choose what they want to participate in. Under the social emotional umbrella, with a combination of our own folks, and folks from the Mass Partnership for Youth coming in to present. We, things along lines of anxiety management, screen time, mindfulness and balance for teachers. We have a staff presentation on being autistic, as I would say to be an autistic teacher. And we also have an afternoon planning for school-based activities, where there'll be elementary focused on literacy, and middle and high school will be doing site court on site issues of loose ideas for independent teamwork through departments here at the high school, and I believe they're gonna use Google. So excited about that. And the other thing we're starting this week is tomorrow, we're going off to the first meeting of the Essex County Education Community Cooperative. And this is part of the second cohort under a grant that Julie applied for, for planning, with other districts to meet the needs of diverse learners and social learning students. So we're gonna be on a team with Andover, Hamilton, Wena, and Soss, and we're gonna do some strategic planning and long-term planning together, and try to co-opt our assets to work through. So there'll be more on that, I'm sure Julie comes in the spring and give an update, she's our expert there, so some exciting things going on, just kind of, if you haven't talked about it, come on.
Do you share resources in those collaboration groups, or is, or ideas?
We're all struggling, because we all have some level of control issues, and we're part of a group, and we're going to be led in a process. And tomorrow, the process will be identifying the goals of the group, so what are we all individually hoping to get out of it, and how do you blend those needs, and then how do you work on building an inter-district team, working together to set goals? So I think we've all kind of been grilling Julie about what we need to do, what do we need to bring, how do we get the hugging leverage to this? So we're gonna be in the learning room tomorrow, I think they're gonna want us to ideate and think about things. My sense is they're looking for opportunities to bring districts together to, we have a tendency to work in isolation, so how can you put issues on the table and find commonalities where we could leverage working together for, so we're trying to do things. So there'll be more to come on that, but it's an exciting story for us.
Okay. Type A, B, though.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, great. With that, we will move on to our topic in hand, Eagles Nest. So first, I want to introduce Jason Waldron, who is our head of facilities. He's new this year, he joins us from competing district elsewhere, and brings a very wide breadth and range of expertise and knowledge, so thank you. And Pam, I believe you guys have a presentation?
Yep, and it's really, I'm gonna turn it over to Bobby and Jason in a minute. I'll just kick it off by saying, last week, the first priority when we came in was to deal with the report that I had, and what I felt was the immediacy, making a determination about accessibility for kids during the school day, which we then determined should also logically apply to children at any time of the day. So we dealt with safety first, and we kind of gave you a big picture idea of what a plan could look like to move the process forward. And we set out with the objective to get something in place for the fall. So I think that's something to keep in mind. We've kind of fleshed out what a process could look like, and we're gonna kind of give that overview to you, but we're using the driver of efficiency and trying to get something in place by the fall. And it's up to the committee to decide whether that should drive the process, or whether having broader community influence and taking longer to decide what we want should be the priority of the process. And we have no preference one way or the other, we're just giving you kind of the technicalities or the things that need to be done to bring any playground online if you really want to shoot for the fall, whatever you have in mind.
Okay. So it's kind of an if-then equation.
A little...
If you decide, you know, expediency and efficiency toward the fall, you go this way, and perhaps there's a different route if you decide to broaden it out a little bit.
So the guys will give you a little bit of a overview, kind of like a little recap for everybody of how we got here, what we think it looks like going forward, and then what we see the next steps and goals and responsibilities that you have.
Okay, great.
Can we restart the computer?
Um... Yeah. No, we're going to close your hands. Great, well, I believe people who are here might have already heard about the news about the Eagles Nest. The purpose, as Pam mentioned of the presentation, is to talk a little bit about some of our options, what to do next. Briefly, I just want to recap by saying that we did shut down the playground after getting a report from a group called PINE, Playground Inspectors of, inspections of New England, Certified Playground Inspector Organization. And this came after doing our own internal assessment this year. Jason, who's new to the district, has a great eye, and I think it was very clear very quickly that he wanted to bring an outside inspector in. We have been in the past devoting some of our summer capital money in pieces to invest in replacing parts of Eagles Nest here and there, making it, you know, keeping it in the best shape we can. But I think the report that came back, which really coincided pretty clearly with Jason's recommendation, was that we're at a point now where we can't continue to repair it and put more funds into it to an end that is not really going to get us where we want to be. I think previously, the thinking was, could we extend the life further? And I think it's pretty clear from the report that that would not be prudent. So with that in hand, it made sense to close the report. If people have questions later on, as we get into more Q and A, we're community or the school committee happy to go into it. We have the report, Jason's also really good on the technical side, and he can help with that, too. So moving to the current status, as mentioned, it has been roped off just to make sure kids are off of it. We do have an alternative for recess set up by the principal, Jennifer Roberts. And the next step would be to decide first, before you even go into, you know, a replacement option, is whether or not to remove the structure. That is something that we would want to get the school committees buy in on, and we would want to make sure we have communicated briefly through town reps into Town of Essex. We're gonna make sure that they take any steps that they need to do, if there are any votes or anything like that. But so far, I think they've been in agreement on the basic assessment, which is that kids shouldn't be on the playground. So we, you know, I think we would try to get that done over February break. We do have a contractor who's lined up to do that, which would basically need to take the structure. The principal has been working with the student body. It is obviously a blow to asset on how they can involve the kids in that process, because kids have been playing on that for a long time, and we want to make sure that those voices are heard. And it seems like the kids, from what I have heard, are really engaged in ways to have a proper farewell. And obviously, there's certain parts of the structure itself that we want to retain. In addition to Eagles Head, which was remade, there's some plaques that are, that are special on the way. So that's the first step. In terms of what would be necessary for a replacement, Pam did touch on the fact that if the goal is to have a structure in place for the start of the school year in the coming August, September timeframe, that is something that is doable, and Jason can talk a little bit more about that. He has been involved in prior districts, working on playground replacement, so he has a lot of experience there, which has been really up with us. But it does require a quick timeline, which is what Pam talked about. So just to give you a sense of some of the steps that would need to happen, working backwards from installation, the late July, August, four to six week process, we really need to put orders in by mid-April, due to the meantime, for quick. And so there's obviously a design process that would need to happen, I think. And we're gonna get into a little bit of the roles involved on the next slide, but assuming that the school community, and we want to give its thumbs up on the design, which obviously is very important, and similar to how we've done with the Memorial School Building Project and the Middle School, High School Building Project, that would be something we want to do in the middle of the year. So working back from six to eight week design timeframe, really, we want to be picking the vendor in mid-Fbruary, and that would be state contract process. There are many qualified conceptual vendors who are on state contract, a lot of districts use them. That does help to speed up the timeframe in terms of the public bidding process. State contract means that vendors and officials that have gone through a public bidding process are run by the state, so that process, that process will check. So we don't have to do it a second time, because they've already been vetted, the terms and conditions of the basic contract are already set in place. So that would be a way to go. If, by contrast, we wanted to go out with our own special bid process, that would take much more time, because you have advertising for money, et cetera. Even with this process of state contract vendor selection, we could still look at multiple vendors and still have a process where we could decide which vendor we think best, here's what we want, and is most responsive to our needs. And you may remember, we went through a process like that with the Memorial School Project, where we interviewed people and talked to them to get a sense for whether they, we worked well with this. So that's kind of the timeline side. Process-wise, I think there's gonna need to be a group that works on, you know, steering the process along from a project management standpoint, and also from making sure we get stakeholder influence along that way. So in talking with Pam and Jason, we kind of, I think it should really be the credit to Pam for this, I don't know if you want to look at these slides or me, but basically we went through what the school committee would need to do to help us through the process, and then what a steering committee might do. So on the school committee side, we'd want to have a vote to remove the playground, at least from a near authority standpoint. Again, as mentioned, we'll make sure that the talent officers are in the loop on that and take any steps that they need to take. So that would be something we would love to get your input on tonight. We would still have this week and next week to discuss and think about the timeline concept that we've been talking about, and also the structure for potential steering committee. Budget is obviously something that will define this process among other things, and so I think if we could make some decisions on that in the next two school committee meetings, we're fortunate that this time of year, we have several because of the operating budget timeframe, we could get that hopefully decided by the 28th of April, the school committee meetings. These are school committee meetings, and our votes are right here. And then, as mentioned, design, hopefully will be approved. So in terms of a steering committee, it just so happens we've been going through this process already with the Memorial School Building Project, where we had a subcommittee of the school building committee working on playgrounds. We have Jake Foster is here, who's on that subcommittee, so he knows that process well. Jason, Pam, and I serve on it, as well as some other representatives. It does have representatives from both towns on it, so there already are, as I mentioned with Jake, town representatives from the Town of Essex, even though it's the Memorial School. We could consider, so we could consider adding two or three additional representatives from the Town of Essex to that, since it is really primarily used in Essex. Some group has gone through a lot of the process of what does it mean to look at different options, what are some of the vendors that are out there, what are some of the design considerations, and even some of the budgetary questions. So I think we could help ourselves to save some time by listing that group, so we're not going to... Can I clarify? They've already done this, because they're doing it, they've gone through this whole process, doing, okay, so there's already an expertise there. That's right.
One more for that session. But that process won't be, is that, where is the, that's in the design stage, or is it through design, or is it through...
So, yeah, it just so happens that a lot of that is outside of the base design process. With the design that's included in the initial design phase is where are they located, about how big are they, what will the construction requirements be for surfacing, et cetera. But now, what we're doing, which is outside of the design phase, because we're now obviously building, is the equipment, what equipment will be selected, and that's a process that the district typically, like, outside of contractors and contractors.
So it hasn't, so I guess Memorial School hasn't yet reached the stage where we'd be talking about...
No, they're in design. We've seen several...
Some initial schematics.
Yes.
Yeah.
Several.
And but that, and that also, that also doesn't, construction contract hasn't begun for a year, I can't remember the timeline.
Well, the construction form was picked as part of the filed subbid process and the non-filled subbid process. So when we had quote-unquote bid day for the construction project, which is all part of the $41 million construction component of the $52 million project, it did include the company to do the surfacing and the equipment. However, the exact equipment that we will pick is happening subsequently outside of this. So we've done some of it, and not all of it.
And that, and that installation, for me?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes. So the one thing that we would obviously not have from the SBC subcommittee would be the project team consultants that are really part of the NSBA process, so that involves the designer, J C J, the project manager, Dorn, Dorn, New Year. They are really required to be focused on that project per our agreement with NSBA. But obviously, we learn some things, can always ask some question or two, but they won't be actively involved in this. And so we could consider whether to bring consultants, or not whether to use our, you know, our expertise as we... And then in terms of, you know, the work, there are a bunch of steps, and so again, as we think about the timeline, it's law, you know, Jason can tell you he's done it many times, and when he tells me it can be done in time, it makes me feel like this is a person who's been through the process, but there are many steps that we need to be aware of. Obviously, site assessment and permitting is in the ship, there is a pond nearby, I'm not really familiar with, because we haven't done site assessment there, of what might be involved, but we have to go through that step. There are some firms that do design and build together, that might help to expedite things, some of the state contract vendors that we've heard about do that, which would be great. Some school districts instead prefer to have a designer do the design, and then move to a construction company to go along. I think that, that, that's something that steering committee will need to... And then procurement requirements, we talked about the state contract or subbid, and then obviously organizing community involvement, that's going to be very important, and we want to make sure that the process allows for community people to along. What does that look like? How does that take shape over what timeframe? That's really, A, what the steering committee needs to look into, but also something that will dictate timeframe, as Pam will be able to. And just because some of the topics of budget have come up, these are some numbers that we got from, from the building project so far, other schools that have done this. One thing you'll see is that surfacing and equipment are two different budget line items, and surfacing can be very expensive, a lot of times, what that involves is, they call that smooth rubber surface, it's called poured in place, is right? And other districts also go through something that's a little less expensive, but there will be different pluses and minuses, which, E W F?
Engineered by...
Yeah, engineered, wood fiber, et cetera. So it's too early to say where we should set on a budget number, I think we might need to look into that a little bit, but obviously, this is a topic that everybody's wondering about, and something that, just want to share the equation that we're, do have with the Memorial process. Of course, obviously, at the Memorial School, we have three different sites, we're not going to have three different sites here, so that is obviously a big difference. So, yeah, go... So, yeah, go ahead.
I've just added a couple of things. The three different sites in part is driven by the pre-K. And the pre-K must have a dedicated fenced off space. So that's adding to some of the costs. And the wood fiber chips, I think, have been removed out because they're going to be phased out as being considered inaccessible. So we would likely need to go with the poured in place service. And just kind of going back to the timeline and the considerations, I think if, again, I think this is what we need to try to determine tonight. If the goal is to try to get something up and running by the fall, and that may not be the goal, I think if trims down some of the options, like I don't think we could have the luxury of design and then I think we need to go stake the contract, design, build team and then kind of execute as quickly as possible. The only thing that we haven't really fully figured out yet is the process for, what you call the decommissioning of the disposable property. We'd like the committee to vote tonight to go forward with it from the committee's perspective, but I believe it might have to go to board of selection. Because, not to bring up the bridge, but similarly, similar to the bridge, we want to review the lease agreement one more time. We maintain it, but in theory, we're the leasees. So I don't know, in this case, if the school committee votes for disposal, if it's a school committee disposal, we will get that cleared up.
So we vote tonight, it's not really a backstop. It's just to have that in place in case it's needed.
I think it gives us the direction to go out and pursue what are the next steps we need to take to get it to.
I'm going to take comments or questions from the committee first and then open it up.
So two questions. I don't see labor on there, on that slide. Is that, is that not part of this number?
Oh, those are both there. Those prices are included.
Okay. And then I know that one of the questions we had about this site, Council Memorial, in line might, I don't know. Was we're taking down the structure that was built by the town, but we're putting up something that the district funds so that it becomes the district asset. Happens, is that true? Because we, the district owns this building, not the Town of Manchester, right? Oh, we never came to, yeah, we haven't done that. I just, I'm just.
In general, and I also, as we're taking a last look at the leasing. In general, we are responsible for maintaining the property. And when time comes to replace the property with a similarly designed circular base with a building or structure for the same purpose, then it is on us, the district, to build it. It is still technically owned by the town.
Right.
And we lease it. So depending on the other factors.
I think a very simple version of that in reality is as long as we exist, we own it, are responsible for everything under property. If there's dissolution, then you're going to have to go back to the property. That will happen, so. No, I know that, but I'm thinking about the building versus the bridge. Like, I have no interest in the bridge, but. The bridge is. But you know what I'm saying? It's like, there are these different assets. I just.
Yeah.
We're not going to go down the bridge. I think not. The bridge is complicated because it was at one time considered part, it's. It was included as part of the school campus properties in order to enable the programs and to be able to option. So that's how that kind of got created.
I just wanted to say that I'm really excited to hear how people who are here. And I'm really curious to know how this is going to go because I think it's really important that this steering committee gets together and decides if it's going to be, get it done in the fall or if it's going to be something more involved. And I'm just really excited to hear everybody's opinion. My kids are done with the playgrounds.
I think, anyone similar?
Yes, somebody called me and I want to just communicate what.
So Dawn Burden called me last night.
She was on the original building with me for the, um, it's nice. And I think probably I would recommend that she call you because she had some information about the original structure and wanted to make sure that everyone just understood that this was a valuable asset for the town. And said that is very clear. We knew that last week and we've seen that on social media. Folks have some very strong feelings about it. We get it. We have to decide about safety. So that's, it's, it's been shut down. So I just, I did want to tell you that she had called and had read the report, understood where we were going with this. But I think really does feel that the community is invested in this, in this structure and wants to help in whatever the next thing is. Of her concern is also about volunteers, that, you know, you have a lot of people who have a lot of thoughts on social media with them and it comes down to showing up and things they don't necessarily show to do the work. So that is my own perspective. And also, I think she shares that same opinion. And that's an opinion, not a fact. Oh, shut up now.
So I have one line here, I think before we go, I have to, this is a one call, but I think the proposal is that the district capital would be used to fund whatever materials, et cetera. The committees collectively decide because they're not funding a proportion by the current district capital funding.
Yes, this would, this would be a district asset to people. And the budget is really part of the school board. And so if there's any information that we developed together and started to gather some to come up with a reasonable budget, we're asking if something is just a random budget that sits here.
Well, I think we've talked about apportioning funds and earmarking funds in the future for the capital upkeep of Essex Elementary. And this falls under that. So it's something, you know, that works. We didn't expect to spend now, but it's there and we can do that. So before I open it up, yeah.
I have one question. What I want to understand, what we are able to tonight, the only vote we really need to take tonight is to remove the playground. We're going to listen to public comment and then we have time to consider if it's going to be more of a community based project or if it's going to be a school based project. That decision is not being, we still need a lot more information for that.
Either way, any way we go, it's a community project.
Right, because I'm saying we're evolving. Yes. Are we, we're not voting, are we doing the rush one tonight? Or the? Yeah, I think in the next two meetings, the determination should be scope of budget and charge of the committee, whether it's to get recommendations for designs here by April 6 or whether or not it's to explore only a different, that kind of engage if they have to engage. And just understands that it's likely won't be able to. This is a process question. If your steering committee bring a recommendation forward about what the process will be? Or do you want to have a? The basic charge for the committee?
So we need to decide whether or not the process is going to be expedited process and playground in the fall, which means we move pretty quickly. Or it's going to be more of a, more community involvement, which might take a little bit more time and not necessarily playground in the fall. And in order to make that decision, we need to hear from you guys. We need to hear how you feel about it. If this is something, if the community wants to be more involved, if you want to kind of expand this effort and take a little bit more time, great, fine. We just want to know that. Or if, you know, the timing, A, is unfortunate because it happened so quickly, but also, B, it's kind of fortunate because we already have a committee in place that is working on building a playground. So we can tap that expertise. We can kind of tap that timeline and get something up by the fall. So that's something we need you guys to help us decide. So with that, I will open it up to comment. Keep in mind, we're trying to keep comments under the two minute timeframe and each person speaks once on the same topic. So with that, please, we'd love to hear from you. Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Brittany. My daughter is kindergarten at Essex Elementary School. My question is.
Brittany, can you say your last name?
Gadori. Probably toward you. The structure that's in place now is obviously not, my daughter has a disability. She's epileptic. So the structure that's in place now is not accessible to her, which we found completely unfairly unfair. Beginning of the year, my daughter was coming home hysterical. She wasn't able to access it. Anyone with a epilepsy is not allowed to climb higher than their own height. So the new structure that's going to be put in place, is it going to be a multi-level structure? Or are we going to keep it under the ADA Act and make it accessible to all students? Because she can't be the only epileptic student that ever will attend Essex Elementary School. That's just my question.
Yeah. So I think we, when again, the way the playground was built in 1985, there was different laws and people weren't considering, you know, different types of students that were going to go to the schools. And I think now with the different laws is, they build a playground, that's really for. So I think we're taking into consideration not only the current students, but the future students that will come to the building themselves.
Are you going to reach out to like any parents like myself who have children with disabilities to kind of tap what their thoughts are and what disability their child has? And how maybe because we've dealt with it for so long, we might be an asset to infer, like a wealth of information if we deal with it every day.
That's part of the community piece that we're asking.
Correct.
So that, I don't need to jump.
No, 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 you.
That will depend on, I think, the level of involvement. Will depend on which road we decide to take based on your feedback. Are we going to take something that's going to be, you know, take a little bit more time with a lot greater community involvement? Or are we going to go a little bit more quickly? And there are going to be Essex representatives on the existing SBC board that you all can reach out to.
Okay. But I would assume any playground we get is going to totally ADA compliant.
Yeah, so we, I mean, that's the law.
It has to be E S specs and N A A specs. And that's where the design build process will be.
I think just our concern is to speak out to the school, I think, with Jennifer and telling her, like, hey, you know, the doctors are all saying like, the structure, what is happening? So we were just concerned where, is that going to be taken into consideration at this point, since what they got before?
Yeah, absolutely. Any structure that is built now has to be ADA compliant to everybody. So anything that will go up will be compliant. I mean, the beauty of the Eagles Nest was that it was something that was created, what, 40 years ago, 30 years ago? And everything was different then.
35 years ago.
35, so everything was different. And, you know, it wasn't, it's now not, well, it wasn't accessible then and it's not accessible now. So therein lies the opportunity to put up something that is really accessible for all.
It's just our concern was like Annie had said, like a lot of the social media stuff, people were pushing to keep it.
Yeah.
Keep it. And that was our concern was you're not listening to parents like myself who have, who combat this every day, where we had to sit down and make really tough decisions on signing a waiver, basically saying, all right, we're going to take the risk because we were pushing as emotional, social, social thing where our daughter was being excluded. Because how many kids are going to want to play with her?
We can't keep that up. It's gone.
Yeah, okay.
You know, it's not going to be an issue. It is deemed completely unsafe for everybody.
So I'm sorry that you had to read those comments.
That was offensive.
By total sidebar. So yes, your daughter's entitled to everything.
Okay, thank you.
And with this new playground?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, so thank you. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else?
Trying to introduce myself again. Kate Koch-Sonquist, Dodge Street Essex. I just want to make sure that everybody here is aware of the existing outdoor facilities that are available for E S students right now. So we had a playground. We have a field that's about the size of a standard soccer field and we have a slab of pavement. In the 2013 HABIE report, that field was listed as a level two priority due to the poor drainage there. So that report, for anybody who's not familiar, defines a level two priority as a major issue that should be addressed within the next one to five years. So we're seven years on. My kids haven't been allowed to play on the field since before Christmas because it's been so muddy. So I have a first and second grader. They're playing on a slab of concrete at recess. And you're telling me that they're not going to be able to play on anything but that until the fall. And to me, that timeline is unacceptable, especially considering that we've known about this field issue for seven years. And I mean, shame on us for not following up on that because as Essex parents, we should have been advocating a lot earlier. But I find this timeline infuriating.
Anyone else?
Carol Mandela, Western Ave, Essex fifth grader. I want to say that I too feel negligent in being on top of things that should have been in the front burner that have always been on the back burner. But I'm more concerned with the, how quickly it was shut down with really not any concrete plan for what the kids are going to do from now till the replacement. I mean, I'm not only a parent, I'm on the PTO board and we've been approached with can you fund stuff for the kids to do during recess? And I'm not saying a or nay to that. I just think, I find it hard to believe that on Sunday, all of a sudden, it was no more Eagles Nest. Like this, it just seemed so abrupt and that nothing was in place to facilitate a transition to the new playground. Like what is the plan for the E S students with no field and just a hot tub to play with? I mean, jump rope, I mean, I just feel like, I just feel like it could have been better, we could have been better prepared. We could have had a better plan in place. There could have been more community involvement from, I mean, I'm sure even in the summer that people knew that this was, this was where we were headed. And I think there are a lot of involved parents in Essex and that's a resource that should be tapped more often.
So Carol, I agree with you. We all agree with you. The suddenness of it took us all by surprise. And no, we did not know in the summer. Nobody knew in the summer how bad it was. It's one of those things that, hold on. It's one of those things like Memorial that you see every day and you see it and you see it and you see it and you don't realize how bad it is.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree, but I think we all knew it was coming.
Hold on. Hold on. Kudos, kudos to Jason. Who looked at it with a fresh eye and said, wait a second, I need a professional opinion. And that is what happened. And that's how we got here.
When was that inspection done?
I agree with you. It was done, I believe, right before Thanksgiving and we got the report just recently.
No, the report was dated December 10th, I believe.
And that's just recently, right before spring.
That's when they sent the report. And then we had to review the report. We talked with the person who wrote the report to make sure we understood the implications, what the questions we had. To your point, it was about the fact that, do we have any time interim? It doesn't sound like it for your report, which wanted to confirm that. That was confirmed. And so next thing we did was bring it to the first available school committee meeting and have the report, you know, closed down. Some kids couldn't be on it. So I also wish we had more time.
So tonight, I understand the process is determining whether to remove the Eagles Nest. But where do we as parents with students at the facility right now, what's the next step to improve their recess? Like where do we?
That's what I think Jennifer is working on right now. Because as I said, we, the school committee found out about this a week ago, the same time you guys all did. This took everybody by surprise. So I think Jennifer's working on this. And I think, as you said, involved parents, absolutely we chat to Jennifer.
I reached out to her specifically about that today and she told me that I needed to come and talk to you tonight.
Yes, because we want to hear what everybody wants to do.
No, she, she said that she was not involved with that, that I needed to bring those questions to Pam and the school committee.
So there are two tracks. I would say day-to-day operations in terms of what the kids are doing at recess. I'll have a conversation with her in the morning and make sure she understands that that is for her to manage on a daily basis. In terms of the long-term planning and how we're going to get to the next step, definitely, that's Bobby, me and Jason together to figure out.
What about the in-between?
Yep, in the in-between, I think where all the elementary kids are basically in the same situation, which there's a hot tub option in both schools right now.
Well, Memorial has a courtyard and a play structure.
Which is also under repair currently.
I think it's all hot tub.
It's all hot tub, very hot tub with, with things like, you know, nets, jump ropes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's something we can absolutely take.
The net should be an all-hot tub. And Memorial will be hot tub.
So I don't, off the top of my head, know the inventory of what kind of play toys they have out there, whether they, there's hoops, I don't know. But I can't picture the condition of them right now.
I went, I went over there on Sunday. There are hoops, there's a go-go ball pit. I assumed Jason, that remains.
That remains, yes. But we talked, yeah, so there's two hoops and.
Patas, yeah.
We do have a ton, we have a ton of PE equipment and things that could probably be leveraged from now until we get other, you know, other toys, if there's other things that people want out there.
But the types of.
I'm, I don't know if I'm allowed to keep talking, but.
No, I, actually, public comment is comment. So we do appreciate your comment. We're looking for feedback. At this point, I don't think it makes sense to get into a back and forth. There is a process being managed and being started for the interim.[1796.34] And in terms of getting a new playground, if that is where you guys wanna go, getting a new playground by the fall, that's one track to go. If you wanna take a little bit more time and have more community involvement, then I think that's up to you guys to decide. Um, but I know Sarah wanted to make a comment.
Well, I have two things. One, um, one is that what I'm hearing from you guys so far is that you just really wanna get a new playground as soon as possible, which I think is gonna be the fall. That's my one comment. And my other comment is, I know it really stinks, the Memorial kids have only hot tub, they're only gonna have hot tub for the entire school year next year. Um, when our kids were in elementary school about, I don't know, six or seven years ago, there was a whole team of us and we went out and we painted things on the wall and we made a new, what did we do? We did the states on the thing and we, and we tried really hard because we felt like the Eagles Nest wasn't really sufficient and we wanted to make more activities, and we did that as a group of parents in the PTO. So I think coming together as a community, working with Jennifer and putting stuff together for, to hold it together for the spring is gonna be, you know, something that is kind of on the school community to work on. And, um, as far as getting something in place as soon as possible in the fall, that's, we're, we're hoping for.
I just wanna be mindful that there are a few people here, but there are a lot of people that have thoughts about this. So, um, I know that there are folks who would like to do, you know, we talked a little bit about a community bill and what would that look like? Um, so I wanna make sure that that idea is not overlooked.
Okay. Do you wanna take Carol in?
Sorry, we went up at the same time. Oh, I was just, I, I just wanna make sure, I mean, we, we did discuss this last Tuesday, the email went out to the community last Wednesday. I would've hoped that, I mean, I know it was shocking to the administration and the leadership over there as well, but that there would've been a plan, what I'm hearing from the public tonight is there really wasn't a plan as for what the kids should do every day at recess, I mean, it's finished, so that's just what I'm hearing. I would hope that that would have, that there would've been some kind of, to just send the kids out, so if you could look into that.
Yeah, I don't have. I don't have the same sense of things, but I'd hope to look into that.
Okay, um, but I may think that there should be some kind of plan for while the kids are, kids are out there or during, um, so, and so the parents can go in and help, they just can't go in and say, oh, here, hey, there's some coordination.
Right.
So within that week, I think a lot could've happened if we didn't.
Uh, Teresa Whitman, Eight Lefton Street in Essex, I have a fifth grade girl and a, um, first grade boy, so I'm in this for the next few years with him. And, um, I think my concern, wholeheartedly, is not so much, I mean, this is a sentimental structure and the whole community's involved in everything. My concern is not only the abruptness of the closure, but the fact that if this was something that was being looked at starting in the fall, this could've been outreach to parents for exactly that purpose, that we could have rallied and give, so volunteerism in, at, at, in Essex and at EES has been low in the last couple of years. But this is something that actually would've been probably a really good touch point to kind of get people energized again. And so had we known in October or September that there was any concern at all, all that would've had to have been is go forth, hey, just wanna let people know, let parents know that there are some concerns, the structure's aging, it may need to be repaired at some point, don't even have to get into the idea of it being left. Does anyone have input? How can we, is, would anyone like to be involved? You know, the, the Gaga pit is a great resource, and that was done by the PTO, that was a group of parents that, that put in the time and effort to put that in there. So my main concern is not the fact that the Eagles Nest necessarily needs to go. I don't love the timeframe, I sure don't love my first grader spending the next six, you know, six months on a pack of hot tub and know there isn't a plan in place, that there wasn't a plan. People could have been involved in that, and so for me, it's a bigger issue of, similar to the Maravista and the eighth grade trips, why are we not looking a little bit more forward and being a little bit more proactive in parent involvement? And like, just letting people know. And I have, I spoke here in the, in the fall about, um, people serving on school councils so that people can be involved in stuff, but this wasn't that. All it would've taken is an email saying, this is on the horizon, and then people would've known a bit, and then it would be a choice. And then if we show up here and it's, and it's closed, then hey, we didn't show up and do anything. But now there's no plan, and we've had no chance to galvanize, and it's gonna take time and effort. And in the meantime, the kids literally have a pack of hot tub, which hey, isn't the worst thing in the world? I can play four-square, my kids can play wobble, fine, but it's a big difference and a big change. And it would've been nice to have an actual plan in place, it would've been great to receive an email that said, we know that this is difficult, we're closing the structure, but here's what we have in place already, here's the plan. And I've talked to both my kids, and I know what's going on at recess right now. And they are trying to crowdsource ideas from the kids right now to string together a plan, but that's not a plan. So my concern going forward is, is, actually it says request, to please be looking or, or advising administration to be accepting of and looking for some parent input on things that they know are gonna be emotional and know that people are going to want to get involved with. We've seen this happen already, it's not new.
I will, I, thank you, I appreciate that, and I do understand. I will tell you that we started the Maravista thing well in advance with that in mind. And again, the time you took us by surprise.
I know.
Not by, as you well know, not by anything anybody else could've done. No one could've known that the staffing was not going to work out when it didn't work out, so that's another situation. As far as this situation, I see your point, I absolutely agree. I think again, this was one of these things that, like all of the other aging facilities we have on these two, three campuses, you look at it for a long time, you don't really realize how bad it is until it is bad. So, you know, we, we could've had this conversation five years ago, three years ago, one year ago. I think we would've been in the same place, but.
Can I make a request?
Yes.
The field, which is the only other option at this point, um, it is generally not mowed in any, um, reasonable timeframe. It gets to be, you know, close to knee height for kids, we have, we run into it at field day every year. I'd make a request to the school committee to make sure that the field is at least usable when mud isn't an issue.
Okay, thank you, and that we will take that under advisement.
Hi, my name's Anne Salamunas, I live in Essex on Harlow Street, I've got two children, so they're both at Essex Elementary. Uh, so, it, it, I read the report, and it does sound like that these things didn't happen overnight. Um, that exactly what you're saying, we might've been having this conversation a year ago, three years ago, five years ago. So with this new playground.
Mm-hmm.
What are we gonna do to keep, um, sort of constantly evaluated? So we're not in the same position in, I don't know, ten years, I don't know how, I don't know how long.
That's a good question, I think, um, as, as we've talked about earlier, things are very different now in constructing all kinds of these school equipment pieces, um, that they were thirty-five years ago. So these things are made, uh, in a little bit less of a complicated manner, or fewer pieces. They are made to stand the test of time, um, a little bit better than, you know, the, the playgrounds that were built thirty-five years ago. Um, but again, we're going to take a, you know, proactive approach to our assets that we have put up. You know, we've got Memorial School, we've got this, we've got a long-term plan in place, Bobby can speak to that, I think that's a bigger issue. Um, but I think Jason has probably a better, um, grasp on playgrounds these days, and maybe you can speak to that a little bit.
And actually, I'd just like to offer, this did come about because there was some discussion amongst staff about the condition, so I asked for an inspection. We hadn't been doing annual inspections, they're not required by law when we're doing internal inspections. We will be doing annual inspections going forward to have a third-party review of all of our safety.
I, I'm okay with the playground coming down, I, I understand it's traumatic for some families that have lived here for a long time. The fact of the matter is, it's not ADA compliant.
Right.
That stinks.
Yeah.
I mean, it does. So, at, at the end of the day, I mean, I didn't have a playground growing up, we had monkey bars.
I think we can get through the interim, we can work together to do it, and I don't disagree with Teresa's comments.
We had a hill, so. Uh, uh, no, I don't either, and I understand it can be emotional, but it, it's not, it has to be more all-encompassing. So, um, uh, my other question also was, um, if we go with the quicker plan, we're, we're going to need a new elementary school, uh, at some point, right? Do we know when that's gonna happen, and then I'll, I'll, I'll sort of tie that in, like roughly fifteen year, I mean, I don't know, ten, five, three, what?
Ten, yeah.
Ten, ten.
Ten.
That, that was kind of what we spoke about when we talked about Memorial.
So if we're gonna have a new elementary school in ten years, do we have a rough idea, are we gonna raise the building, are we gonna?
There's no way to know that.
I know, but, but I know, I know, but, but, this is the question, but you do need to take that into account
I wish I knew, I'm gonna say.
It's a good question, we better.
when you're talking about a new playground.
Absolutely.
Because is construction gonna wreck it?
We, we had that same conversation.
I mean, we want a long-term playground.
Yep, we had that same conversation with Memorial and the tennis courts. So we were able to keep the tennis courts that were, uh, extremely controversial, and everybody. And expensive. And very expensive, so that will be something we will look at in the future. And I would be very surprised if we were going to build a playground by the fall, if that's what everybody chooses to do, that will not be there in ten years, mainly. I don't know what's going to happen in ten years, I don't know what the fiscal, you know.
I'm not asking you to predict the future, I'm just telling you to take that into account.
No. They will absolutely take that into account.
You know, I'm. Okay, okay.
Absolutely, I mean, we've got a building committee seated that has, you know, varying degrees of excellent expertise.
I'm sure, yeah.
That's what they take into account, and I'm sure the next building committee will be the same.
And then I have one more question, so there's currently, uh, is it the, um, what's the steering committee? There, there is currently a steering committee for the Manchester Memorial, is that right?
There's a, a school building committee that has overseen the entire process, there are several subcommittees that take care of various aspects of the, the, um, project. And right now, there is a subcommittee working on the playgrounds there.
Okay, so that is.
And so that's kind of what we would hope to tap.
Okay.
If we're going that expedited, that expertise and all of that, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for?
Learning curve.
Yeah, learning curve and, and mechanics.
Yeah.
That's already in place.
Okay.
So it'd be great to tap those guys and just go off and running, put some more Essex people on the board so you guys feel like there's more of a community, um, representation and be off and running. And that's, that's again, the most expedited way. I think we had a question, thank you very much.
I just have one more, one more comment. This is an open meeting, correct?
Yes.
And just, if you know anything about the, um, politics in Essex right now, the citizens really don't feel that they're being heard. So just Madam Chair, I just feel, if you could respectfully, if someone has more to say, I just respectfully allow that to happen because we, we feel like we don't know what's going on, communication between town government and citizens is severely lacking, and we feel like we want our voices heard.
I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But we come here twice a month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is empty. Nobody comes, so if people wanna be heard.
We'd be happy to listen to you all night long.
Show up.
Okay.
There's a little guy in the front who would like to speak, yes?
Hi, my name is August, I am from Essex. I am, I am in first grade. Would you please have a swing set and, and monkey bars? Because that is the thing. I like to play with monkey.
August, thank you, and yes, you will have a swing set and monkey bars, thank you for coming. I think it's probably almost a special time. Yes.
I, I'm Jessie Palm from Victoria Drive in Essex. I'm one of those kids that helped build Essex Eagles Nest way back in nineteen seventy, I was actually in first, second grade. And one of the things, I mean, I have, so I have a daughter that's in first grade now, and every time I go there, I'm like, feeling like we're on borrowed time, like you look at it, and it was a wooden structure building, my treehouse fell down a forever ago. My swing set's been gone for decades, like, so the fact that it's still been around is, you know, kind of surprising, especially when you see it up close, like the nails coming out, you know, just look at it all. So it's definitely time for a new one, and definitely time to have it be something that's like state-of-the-art that everyone is able to use. And I do feel it is important for our kids to have something to play with now and to keep them engaged, especially where recess time is so limited. However, I also don't wanna kind of just throw together something that's up because one of the things that makes the Eagles Nest so special, I mean, I'm getting emotional about it, but it was crazy people, um, is, is how it was built. I mean, and I know that's not gonna happen now because like if you saw like the pouring rain and the extension cords to the mud and like all the people that just were like hammering nails and doing crazy stuff. My grandmother was actually the kindergarten teacher in Essex for thirty or so years, and she was telling me that, like, we were talking about how everyone had a role in building playground, and all the kindergarten role was to like scrub the tires clean that were on like in the structure that they built, like, so there's a bunch of kindergartners out there cleaning tires, you know, obviously, it's not gonna be that sort of involvement now because you can't have a bunch of kindergartners cleaning some tires off some random trucks from somewhere. But really making it be something that's a community project, or that it has like the special sense of like, I mean, anyone that I went to school with there, I mean, at the time too, I mean, we were there for nine years together, kindergarten, third grade. We all remember that, like, that's part, like, we're in our late thirties, early forties now, and we remember that. And it'd be great to have another project like that. And I hope that that's something that we can do, although I do understand, you know, I can stand up here and say like, I hope that happens and that people get involved, but if people aren't gonna get involved, then it won't work. But I really think that we should kind of try to look at it as having two solutions, like, what are we gonna do now to get us through whenever it's gonna be that we're able to build a new Eagles Nest? And I don't think that we should necessarily look at like having something in in the fall, like going the fast route. I would rather have something that's gonna get us by until we're able to come together as a community and build a special playground, something that else is like that. So I just wanna, I know a lot of people have heard that we want something really quick, and I think we want a solution for the right now, at least me, I would like a solution for the right now, but that isn't necessarily a brand-new, state-of-the-art playground today. That's something that our kids will have access to and can use until the state-of-the-art playground comes, whenever the timeframe is.
So I think you hit the nail on the head there, there are two tracks.
Yeah.
There's one, to get that state-of-the-art, um, playground by the fall. And that's, you have a couple of people seated on the, um, subcommittee, uh, I'm sorry, the, um, SBC, you have the playground committee, that can move pretty quickly. Soup to nuts, you have design build, contract to do it. Or you can take a little bit more time, and you can have as much community involvement as you want, you can, we can hire, um, we can, uh, direct the committee, committee to hire a builder who will allow community involvement in the building process. That's all up to you.
Well, that's something I don't want, like, I'm hoping that there's a middle ground, not like, well, you said you wanted to have the community involved, so you're not getting a playground for two years, but more of a, here are six swings that you can have and a standalone monkey bar set to get you through until your state-of-the-art playground is built. So it's not necessarily a, you can't have anything because you're building this playground, it's like, you know, how much would it be? Or can we take kind of a, a temporary approach on it and have something to be usable and safe that everyone would have access to, but it's not kind of the, the grand plan? Like, does it have to be either all or nothing? I guess is what I'm wondering.
I don't know the answer to that question, I think it depends on, yeah, that's what the steering committee has to figure out.
And I had a question.
And it also has, it also depends on the funds available.
Yeah.
So if you're gonna use some of those funds available to do an interim, then you're gonna have less, we're all gonna have less for whatever happens in the end.
No, I understand that. I had another question too, around the steering committee, so how does that, like, I'm interested in that.
So I think. Yeah.
How would I go about like the next step in that process, or where would I go for that?
Well, I think in the next couple of meetings, we kind of decide with input what that steering committee looks like. I mean, there's already a steer, there's already a steering committee seated, and we can either.
Well, maybe Jake can take your.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Maybe you can get your email and.
Okay, yeah, that's great.
I think what we need to do is go back to the school committee charge, and the school committee's gonna have to identify a budget, the scope of budget, and then charge from the committees, then we'll do the call for.
Call of interest.
So that will go out to everybody, we'll take the names, we'll have to have some way of either, you can either set it up similar to the building committee where you have on a parent for general interests, someone who has construction expertise, someone who has legal, you can set it up however you want, and that's what the committee needs to do in the next couple of meetings, is kind of figure out the structure of your committee, we put an all-call out for that, and then take the input, and then I, I think one of the concepts can be that there are focus groups of different community groups within town organized by the steering committee, to get, so that they can be, the group can run effectively, because if you're up to already ten or twelve people, it'll start to get a little bit wobbly, um, and then kind of go down that track. So I think the committee needs to take kind of hear all that and take some time to consider how you put the structure.
So to clarify that comment.
Yeah.
That means we're already take, we're already taking more time, so you're, you're kind of getting away from the get it and in the fall, use the existing committee.
There's a steering committee.
The steering committee is, is not, isn't. The steering committee is is not, is in version of a.
He's gonna do.
So, there's two.
Yeah, so Jake, so Lucky Jake. I I'm gonna go back to, the committee first has to decide timeline consideration.
Right.
But your timeline determination is then going to likely determine what type of commitment. That's what we're trying to do.
So, would the, if, who's deciding that though? Are there not gonna be more members on that get to kind of give the input to say that that would be important? Because it's kind of something if this already developed steering committee says we're just gonna go forward, then there's not really the opportunity for anyone else to.
Outside of this forum.
No, I think the um already existing steering committee, there would probably be a few more, a couple more people added to that from Essex. So, there would be more of a voice and more people to reach out to.
But I think the committee first needs to determine is the priority driver.
Yep.
Fall opening?
Yep.
Or is um more of a negative process.
So, it is gonna be decided by the committee, that that aspect of it?
Yes, but with input. I mean, we would like to hear.
We're not making that tonight, we have three more meetings, so people should keep coming to help us. Because I could not make a decision tonight.
No.
I mean, I don't.
Okay. One in the back.
Hi, Jeff Wayne. Uh, I live on Story Street in Essex. I have two kids in the elementary school and a third will be attending there. Um, I was also one of those kids who played on it when it was brand new. Um, and it's fantastic and amazing that that structure is still there. I mean, uh wood structure built like that, you know, if you built that today, I would tell you that, you know, expected lifespan might be fifteen years or something. And so, I think it's a huge credit to the school and the community and everybody else who was involved that it did last as long as it did. And with some, obviously, it has some major drawbacks, but um it has been a wonderful place. Obviously, accessibility is a major, major issue and needs to be addressed. I think that its main positives are um how much freedom and independence it gives the kids really to be creative. In a deeper sort of way. And it really gives them a lot more independence than most modern playgrounds that you see. You know, there's, there was so much creativity and imagination that went into every game that was on that. And um, and I see my kids doing the same thing. And I think that independence really teaches a lot of responsibility, you know, responsibility for yourself. Because, yeah, it was a challenging place, but you were also looking out for your for your friends that were there. How to create that in a new playground is a challenge, to say the least. But I think that should be a goal.
Absolutely, and I think that's, you know, part of the community that will be doing that. And the design build, you have people who are contractors who are, this is what they do. Thank you.
Uh, I have one one more point. I I'm just gonna echo the sentiment that um, and abrupt is the word that I had in my head as well. You know, there's been a lot of talk about adults being emotional, but it was also emotional for the kids. And some warning that even just that there was going to be an inspection and there were questions and stuff. And, you know, parents can give their kids some some heads up and things like that, and that would have been appreciated.
I have a question following up on Jessie's point about bringing in some type of temporary or semi-permanent equipment while we are making this decision in the interest of getting kids running and bouncing and swinging and sliding and climbing and those types of um physical activities that contribute to sort of gross motor planning and sensory integration skills that could really only be achieved through those kinds of activity. You can't replicate them on the hot top. So, if the parents of Essex were in the PTO or whatever, if we were to get together our private nonprofit funds and decide we want to put in a climbing structure or swing sets or monkey bars in the interim, what are our ob, our obstacles that we would then should anticipate?
That's a good question. I am gonna let Jason answer that because he has far more expertise in this area than I do. And again, I would also say that um then that interim might become a little bit longer, just to just to guess. No, and it might not be answered tonight, but what do you think?
No, I mean, so so I can't answer it all. I mean, I know you're still obligated to follow certain procurement laws, right? So, I mean, that's that's certain, you know, there's certain thresholds you still have to follow, chapter one forty-nine. There are certain ADA components you still have to follow, there are certain rules you still have to follow, even if it's temporary. So, just kind of keep that in mind. I mean, certainly, I think we'd be kind of open, but it's not that, again, I know if one kind of talks about the timeline, that's actually an aggressive timeline to get a full playground. To put even something quick and temporary will still take take time. So, again, a lot of it's beyond our control because there are certain laws, regulations that we have to do um because it's on public settings. But again, I'm not saying it it can't be done, but I mean.
I think that it's um, I don't think that anybody is arguing that we should be able to continue playing on the structure or that we don't need an ADA compliant structure, at least not anybody in this room.
Yeah.
But um, I think that it's also important to maintain some perspective that to us as adults, this time period seems finite and fleeting. But to, you know, five, six, seven year olds, eight months is like forever to them. Remember how long a school year took when you were in elementary school? Like, eight months is twenty percent of my kid's life. So, to tell kids that young that that is the the timeframe that they're gonna be limited to this hot top is, I think, I think significant, something that we really need to underscore the developmental importance of having access to appropriate outdoor space. And these are things that, you know, are, these are are facts proven through empirical studies that are in peer reviewed journals. These aren't like opinions or theories or fake news. That the developmental benefits that kids receive from having access to these kinds of equipment and to these kinds of spaces cannot be underscored enough.
Absolutely, and again, that goes back to, you know, how how the community decides to proceed.
I just want to clarify, did I here collect correctly that if we can put up a temporary structure, it's gonna lengthen the timeframe of a permanent structure?
Yeah, I'm confused by that too.
I would imagine it probably would because it would be a process in and of itself that would have to happen before the larger process happens. So, I would imagine that would probably, and I'm just throwing out a guess, but I mean, with all the laws and regulations you have to follow and putting up the surface, you have an investment in the surface. So, either you. Yeah, I think we're getting into a.
I think we're getting into an area that we don't really know how to answer. So, I think maybe more comments if we need to, but no more, right?
Yeah, please.
We don't know.
If I were still a parent at Essex Elementary School, our next meeting here is not until the twenty-eighth, so it's two weeks away. I think if I were the Essex PTO now, I would be having some kind of meeting in Essex where I rallied all the parents together and tried to get people all, get some ideas going and figure out what people really want so that you guys can let us know. I think that would make a lot of sense.
I think it's fair to say that swing sets and monkey bars and things that are gonna be climbing in use are going, I don't know if you need drawings or anything like that, but you're gonna need surfacing underneath. You're gonna need an identified space to put them. And it's gonna have to beat the guidelines, right?
Yeah, exactly.
It's gonna take a process.
A good, so obviously, the best interim thing we can do is we'll put it all on. So, I think that part, if the one agrees with, whatever it is, we'd have to have the same type of review, say, yes, this is safe. So, just like they're certified playground inspectors, we wouldn't want to do anything that certified playground inspector would say, this temporary structure is not going to work. I think we just need to figure out what that is. And to your point, if we can gather the ideas now, absolutely, if we can review them to see what's feasible.
It does seem like it's something that can happen simultaneously. Like, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding why it can't, why it's one and then after that, it's the other, like why it can't.
Remember, there's a budget involved in that too. So, I just want to be mindful of the fact that we have Essex Elementary, which we're trying to extend its useful life. So, it has boilers and it has things that aren't fun and sexy in it, that we need to make sure we take care of. So, I get it, I know it's frustrating, but I want to be mindful of, if we want to build something great, we want to make sure that we have the budget to do it. So, anytime we have these other things, they also take money away from the thing that that pries, right? So, let's keep our eyes on the prize. And I just want to be careful about budget because we have a lot of competing priorities and we have a building we need to maintain until we can afford to build a new one. And you know that we have asked for this a lot in the past two years. And so, um.
I think I had heard that it was like not necessarily money coming out of the budget to build interim stuff.
We're gonna.
That it was gonna be something that maybe parents would do or the PTO would do, so it wouldn't take that money. But I could just be really naive about what I'm saying too.
No, but this is, this is coming out of budget.
For that, so.
For the interim.
No, no, but my my questions specifically have been if we raise the money or if.
Or if they're had the money. So, this, so we're getting a little bit, I think, further ahead of ourselves. Um, I think what everybody needs to do now is go back to your community, figure out what everyone wants to do. Figure out what the next course of action is, because we kind of laid everything out here. And then come back to us and let us know what you would like to do. Do you want to move quickly? Do you want to move slowly? We can't make that decision until we hear from the community. And there are, I think, ten of you guys. Go back and talk to your friends and come back to us. We need to know what to do. We're not gonna make a decision and just say, let's do this. We want to hear from everybody.
They can email us directly.
Yeah.
Can I actually just make a comment? One of the things that's really important, remember, we're Manchester, Essex, we're in a school district. I'm a resident of Manchester, I moved to Essex originally in nineteen ninety-two. And I really enjoyed, as an adult, I really enjoyed the Eagles Nest. I want to see it continue, quite frankly, I've always been impressed by what if to get the playground in place and people instead of putting together. I really hope that this isn't just an Essex community thing. And I think, quite honestly, I don't know if Mr. Foster has agreed to carry on what he thought was one playground and two. But it's a phenomenally creative community area that we're building and we're growing in these. I think, I hope we've established tonight that we're all, we're doing this kind of, well, I remember my elementary school here, or this. We're in a growth mindset, we're not in a fixed mindset. What, how far it can go? We're open to anything. And I think we've got a very creative person, we've got a creative team that's gone through this, that knows what are the costs and what are, what's involved in selecting fixtures, what's all that. We're gonna need a period, what I'm hearing is, we want to do this right, we want to do it quickly, we want to do all that. We have all the resources in place. Think some of this, let's trust each other and go forward in the next several weeks, learn and figure out where you get to. Because I'm, I'm, I think this is gonna come up far better than what I'm an optimist. But anything we've even conceded or worked is done initially.
I guess what I would offer for what it's worked is that, I don't know if Jake feels the same way. I feel like what I learned sitting and listening to the playgrounds subcommittee is that it's a very technical process. It's really not that creative. It's um trying to get something laid out within a budget, but it's really driven by safety layout and access. So, somebody's doing most of that work for you and giving you iterations.
I hear that, but having gone through this once, I'm an engineer and I do very technical dry things every moment of my day. It's amazing where you can find creativity once you've been through it the first time, say, hey, we're gonna get to. And again, even whether it's funding, whether it's community involvement, whether it's the artwork, whether it's what do you do in the meantime? This is actually our second go around.
I think all I can offer in the meantime is you're still gonna need your same core team internally to drive regardless of the financial income source, the revenue source, the procurement process, the identification of where the installation is. So, that's what I'm saying, that's somewhat technical, is these guys are gonna have to go project one and then your project.
So, I'm gonna take one more question. There was someone in the corner who hasn't spoken.
Hi, I'm Chou Chi Star in Manchester. Um, ten-fourth line. So, I came tonight for the budget discussion. That was obviously on my mind, I'm a long time teacher, so I'm a professional, I'm a time, I understand the challenges of it. But I have to say, I appreciate everything that you all said because um as much as we say these two communities are part of the district, it's so often, um like we live in these silos. So, I appreciate hearing what's happening because they're all of our students, not just that my son's at Memorial and your kids are at Essex Elementary. Um, but I think this might be a really nice opportunity to bring the schools together. That was one of the worries that people had in getting rid of the um overnight for the fifth grade. But that, to have the conversation, our kids are on a hard top for two years at Memorial, two solid years. And I'm beyond that, what in the world are they gonna do? And so, it might be a nice opportunity for the kids to have conversations with each other, like what is it that you do at recess time? How do you take advantage of that time? It just might be a nice way to bring the kids together before they get to sixth grade. Um, and I have to say, reading about the budget, I was reading in the minutes and hearing about the Eagles Nest. I don't even know what the Eagles Nest is, so I appreciate hearing the stories. Um, and I think that's important for the whole district to understand that when there's a challenge in one of the schools, it impacts all of us, all of the families and all of the kids. So, just wanted to share that.
All right. So, I will leave it here and charge it back to you guys. Go out to your community and figure out what everyone wants to do. Take the pulse, have everyone, you know, have people contact us, have people come in two weeks. We need to make this decision with data.
I was gonna say, thanks, you're saying for them to go figure it out. I don't think they should go figure it out.
No, 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 I don't mean go figure it out.
I mean, we're all in Charlotte, we have our job to do and you guys have a job to do.
Yes.
And then we will all come back and maybe figure it out together.
Poorly worded. Please go tap your friends.
Wonder.
And come out.
One last thing, as far as like the language, I don't know if we could change it to be like if you want it fast or if you want it slow, like if there's a, like, what I'm kind of hearing is we can either do it fast and get it done or you can take a long time doing it and wait a while for your, the program. Like, I don't know if we can change the language or the way we're phrasing it at all.
I don't think that by the fall is fast. I think that's right.
By the fall, it's.
They're taking their time, you know.
By the fall, it's quite fast.
Yeah, but I think like.
But but you can have a high level of community involvement in that, I don't.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna leave it here and we're gonna move on.
I just think it's important to revisit the timeline one more time so people understand. Fast in getting the, it's fast for everybody who needs to build a playground to move, to execute it. It's long for the kids and it's a long wait. But the key deadline driving, if you want it in the fall, is we have to select a vendor by mid-February. I would say you might be able to stretch that until the week after February.
So, we could have discussions in that amount of time? It's not like if we have the discussions, it automatically pushes the data. Like that, that's kind of what I'm seeing.
Well, to hire the vendor, you need to be ready to have him design you something in the next month. So, yeah. So, but that's two weeks.
So, it wouldn't include necessarily a conversation about what we, what we need to do with the kids in the meantime, which I think may be your question. But I think it's also important to see the design of six to eight weeks.
No, I understand that, yeah.
Having been through that process on the building project for Memorial, that goes quickly and that involves a lot of iterations back and forth, feedback, coordinating people who participate in those meetings, making sure people are there to review the feedback. That time goes very, very quickly. And so, again, I I hear you about how it feels for the kids. That's that's gonna be a fast process. And I'm not saying it should feel fast to you. I mean, it'll it'll be a challenge to do a design that quickly. So, with that, um, we're gonna move to the budget discussion. I hope you all say that's all very, very important. In the meantime, um, I would like to hear a motion to have the, how should I word it? Is it, is it critical on how I word it? A motion to remove the existing Eagles Nest playground.
Or is it authorize the district?
Authorize the district. Okay. I would like to hear a motion to authorize the district to pursue removal, pursue removal of the existing Essex uh elementary Eagles Nest playground. Do I have a motion?
One I can.
Okay. That's right, Cameron, second.
Another question.
Yep.
Um, once you remove, um, can you uh, can you surface the existing pad or whatever the heck that is? So that it's playable? Is there, or what's gonna happen to the, is it's gonna remain remote?
Be a mud pit?
Maybe a slight assessment.
Yeah, we can find a slight assessment, but at the time, it was just to remove the actual structure.
Yeah.
Um, you know, obviously, before we build a new playground, we need to do a full excavation, remove the E and the V F, dig down and search back and whatnot.
Yeah.
So, we can kind of discuss, but at the time, it was just to remove the structure.
Yeah.
No, I'm just wondering, people are are concerned about, you know, playable area that if we were able to kind of mulch it or whatever the heck you do, at least it would be.
Yeah, so the.
Space that's not mud. Some grass.
So, which of those would?
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All opposed? Any objections? Okay, motion carries.
I would definitely ask and encourage folks to stay because there is a lot in the upcoming discussion that might help with future surprises.
I know, because I'm well, but we are going to the back.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you all for coming. Um, all right, should we geek out on the budget? Let's go. So, yes.
So, yeah, so, um, don't have a formal presentation on budget. This is typically type of year where we get ready for a public hearing on the budget, which is on the twenty-eighth, the next school committee meeting that we have. In advance of that, we do tend to kind of draft a multi-page version, which provides you with more information than you get. Tentative budget is really a hundred page across a page of revenue. Now we have a little bit more of an explanation of where those costs go. The inputs are essentially the same, but there have been minor changes, just to reiterate where we were previously, which was at a three point eight five percent assessments to the town on a very similar level of spending. It did involve a deficit or a shortfall of over four hundred thousand dollars in the category of net dividend results. And so, we're still carrying forward some deficit, not quite as much, we made some minor tweaks that we previewed at the tentative budget public hearing in December. We talked about the fact that we felt like ten percent health insurance rate that was embedded in the tentative budget was conservative. It was not wildly conservative, but it was conservative based off the placement broker. We mentioned that we had been running better in the marriage, and we felt like we could bring that down. Reference the number, or maybe even as good as seven percent. We, the problem is, we just don't get a lot of data that will flow into our renewal at the time of second budget. So we have one more month of data, it's good, the relationship is good. It's expected that early months will be better than the higher deductible plan, because the early months employees are getting claims and insurance company. So that tends to change back over time. But we need to get one more month of this good. You will probably get one more month of data, I would say, just prior to final adoption of the budget. Probably get a renewal number first passed from our negotiation process in early March, which is after the budget is set. That's the way it is every year. So at this point, we've lowered the number to eight and a half percent from ten. On our way down, we'd like to bring it down further, but it's a little premature to do that. And that is saving, it's about forty thousand dollar per point of interest, per point of renewal.
So this brought it down to six, brought it down sixty K?
That's about right.
Okay.
And then on top of that, we have, we reference the fact that every year, we know some people leave, actually set the budget and they're replaced by new people. In other years, we've had people leave and do budget controls, we've had to replace those positions. We've talked to the school committee and heard your feedback, that the community does not want us to have a policy of not replacing retirees, so we are assuming that we will replace retirees. But there is still potentially some savings that come with that, especially as people have been here for many years, right, the hiring is a case of, could go. So we have, I believe we said, a sixty thousand dollar estimate to bring us to a unidentified sixty thousand dollar investment that will help lower our cost structure. To face on, things that could come forward.
Is that two or three?
Uh, it's not, it's not really specific.
They're not public.
Yeah. It's not really specific, but it's based on looking at a couple of different types of scenarios and seeing what seems not too risky at this point. And then the third item that we changed also was every year, we've been trying to replace school choice kids as they graduate, one for one, just so happy that this year is a a year where we have a larger number of kids graduating. After that, if we were in a year where the grade by grade configuration, there aren't quite as many. So it's twelve kids exiting at the end of this year. And so we had initially budgeted three twenty-five, three hundred twenty-five thousand of anticipated revenue in this year, down to three hundred. You may recall that each year, I've been slowly bumping those numbers down just to be safe. But in looking at the class size and where we how we can do that, it seems like we could hold a number level without really much of a change. So that's really actually twenty-five thousand dollars. So all of those things with the same assessment number, but all of those things do not entirely reach the four hundred thousand dollar plus gap. As a result, we're not in a position to take those budgetary changes in turn to continue, in return for the towns. Assessment staying where it was before, three hundred four percent, it's two point eight five, and pretty much the same number. And so what it has done is shrunk the gap down closer to two hundred seventy-five thousand of fresh gap. You may recall, we had a hundred thousand of reserves as revenue source last year. So that is carrying forward unless we were to cut something. So one hundred from last year plus the two seventy-five gap now is three seventy-five thousand of reserves under drafted budget. So obviously, that's not something that we tend to like to do. But when we're running out of places to trim, and we have heard the message loud and clear that we agree that we don't want to be cutting the program or whatever, we've used that flexibility over the years. We really have a revenue problem more than we have a spending problem. So that's why that solution is there. If there are ways in coming weeks to tweak the healthcare number down, do that. If there are other things that come to light, we can do those as well. But at this point, I think it's gonna be hard to reserve enough that much for the
So can I ask a question about this, this paragraph about the E and D number?
Yep.
So, we budgeted a hundred K from June last year, right?
Yes, yep.
Yes. But that year is closed, so why? Why is the hundred included in the two seventy-five if it's already spent?
Yeah. Very important. Great question. Great question. So, yeah, I'm so glad you asked that, because
Good, you didn't need to call me about it.
Huh? Yeah, so, two things. So one, you are hitting on a point that's really important, that the reserves are one-time money. Once you spend the current budget year, one hundred thousand, it's, it's essentially gone forever until you find savings, it's some other banner or whatever. And so that's where we've talked about the pair of reserves.
So we have to keep plugging that one hundred thousand dollar hole. Once we commit to it, then we commit to it in the out years?
To simplify by losing Right, because it becomes a, it becomes a revenue source.
Right.
So unless you replace that revenue source, you have to do the cut one hundred thousand dollars to bring in one hundred thousand dollars through taxation.
Yeah, so.
That's, that's So
For example, if we, if we cut the reserve, if we cut the assessment number to lower than last year, we'd have to, we'd have first in places.
So where else are you? Well, as we talked about last time, if, if you want to charge us with going forward and looking at some program reductions, we can do that. But other than that, we don't have any this is the first year I can honestly say I cannot think, the team cannot come up with one area for reduction, and we have a realmless of additions that we need for, um, for the ten, ten budget. None of the additions are at the health and safety level yet, so we can defer them to next year. And kind of the minor, some of the counseling needs, we're looking at some creative ways to bring in high level up in terms of, we're looking at master doctor level, as we did this year. So basically, the, the only thing we have left, the only thing we can do is cut staff, which is gonna lead to cutting program or driving class size up. So the retail, if we don't place, replace retirees, that would be two to three FTE. They're just, basically there are reductions, so we have less classrooms, so more students per class. Or you'd have to cut a teacher affiliated with a program that's considered exploratory or special, so you'd be eliminating the program.
Um, I just want to give a little bit of background here on how we got here. You're all probably like, what the hell is going on? So a few years ago, we had an override from the towns, and it addressed a systematic problem in that we had a revenue shortfall, so we were going into our reserves in order to fund this revenue shortfall. The override put us in a position where we wouldn't have to do that, and we could also grow a little bit. Fast forward a couple of years, we were hit with a remind me, Abi, twenty percent rise in healthcare, and that was out of the blue. We typically have a very healthy cohort, and companies vie to get us because we are at low risk. We had kind of a perfect storm. Nobody's fault. We had a bunch of situations where the healthcare costs in this cohort of employees skyrocketed. So that basically took a million and a half out of our budget. We did not ask the towns for help. We took care of that internally. This came after our budget was approved a couple of years ago. So we basically took a million and a half out of our budget over two years. And we have continued to be, continued to run very, very lean, so we didn't have to go back to the towns for help. We're now at a point where, as Pam pointed out, we're so lean that any cuts would be to the bone now. There's no, nothing left over. So that's kind of how, that's kind of where we are, just to frame the discussion.
Yeah, and, and just to add on to that, these are some of the slides that we had put up in our public hearing back in December. In case you missed it, they are on our website. But basically, every year we tried to carry the program forward, and we have even gotten so far as to do various things like we've had zero-based budgeting over the years, and starting from zero and building up with all sorts of creative ways. Every time we have a request for something to be added because it's important to our program or to what the kids need, we look for ways to fund those by finding efficiencies, savings, restructuring, and other ways, so that we can maintain a responsible budget that fits within the levy limit. So, you know, as Shannon's mentioned, Pam's mentioned, we've, we've already done that so many years in a row, that we have some cuts already that haven't been restored, and so we really, that's one of the reasons why we don't have more places to go, is because this is a air exercise, as you've been saying, we've been going through, and that's what led us to the, the current gap.
And, and then just to, just to recap really quickly, in the cost, in the deficit you talked about, we originally went from four hundred and thirty-four down to two seventy-five this year. So that comes from sixty thousand dollars out of healthcare, another sixty in earmark retiree savings, and another twenty-five out of school choice?
Yes.
And that gets us down to two seventy-five?
Yes.
Okay.
Plus a hundred more.
So three seventy-five.
Three seventy-five, okay.
Three seventy-five, yeah, yeah.
So I have some
Yeah, please.
So I have a question. So we're at three seventy-five now, unless something from healthcare comes, right? And we're at three eight four to the towns? So I have the towns, or whatever the point that is, have they, are they, do they like where we are, or can they share, can they absorb what we are, so what we, obviously apportionment is part of this exercise. And I don't know if we've gotten to that yet, but we're at three point eight four, as you said, which is our overall assessment. So when you run it through apportionment, I see you can call our conversation, we put Essex at four point three percent.
Different cells. Yeah, and just for the people in the audience, basically, the regional agreement talks about how costs are split between the towns. The big factor that's changed a little bit last year and continues this year is just that the proportion of students in one town versus the other is one of the three inputs, the property value is is another one, because that's a basis of taxation, and that's his census and total population of the towns. So we've seen a little bit of that enrollment between the two towns shift. It's smoothed over three years, so that change we first saw last year is continuing to bubble through. Last year, it was two point eight for Manchester and three point oh for Essex, so it's widened a little bit. If you've been watching our budget for many years, you'll know that for years and years and years, the Manchester assessment was tended to be about point five to point seven five percent, points of percentage, point above the Essex. So it's really only been the last two years that that's reversed, and it's all based on the number of students we have.
So that number could go. Our hole could be becoming greater if when we meet the towns, they will say we can absorb that amount.
Yeah.
So that's, that's where we're hoping we're going to be, but in reality
Yeah, well, if you're in Manchester, three point, three point five eight, which is where the draft apportionment is now.
They might not be able to support
This is, we're just talking about it for the first time tonight. That would be better than they, what they might have heard if you're in Essex, four point three percent is obviously gonna be a little worse. So that's something we do need to follow up with. Obviously, as we've said, one of our primary budgetary goals upfront is we intend to have a budget within the levy limit. So it's really now about creative ways to get there.
So in answer to your question, we're in discussions in the collective group.
We're going finance to the town, so so Manchester, shall we get a, the first reaction from them? I don't think they're going to be surprised. We've laid out for them what the concerns are. We've been talking about how to structure. We use reserves now, how can we off reserves in the future?
It's not surprising.
Not surprised, but it's gonna be a current problem, a growing problem. So if you take the one hundred this year, turn it to two seventy-five. One hundred last year turned to just two seventy-five last year, and for the sort of, we got the six hundred.
Well, I just have one false hope as, as this, for myself, that this number we're seeing is coming down, but it might be
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good guess.
And just as I'm reminding you, the fact that we're dealing with the reserves and it does become a one, if we go out for Essex elementary pardon, the reserves are a key part of that, if you can tell me, is there
Yes.
What rate of trade should we come?
We need to keep that ten percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it was two, two years ago, three years ago.
Yeah.
Might not be able to.
Yeah, it's, it's all coming from the same pot, so. Okay.
Can we spend some time on pages two and three, because this is the first time we've seen it break out?
Sure.
I, I would love to talk about some of this line items, like you know, I see guidance is up, and
Yeah.
Transportation, and I thought that, I thought that we were
Yeah, if you have a specific, I can take them one at a time, because
Yeah, so let's talk about
So the guidance one is an FTE that is the same, but we have a slightly artificially depressed current year baseline, just based off, you believe it, perhaps.
So. We have a long-term ceiling based on the floor sign.
Yeah, so we're getting back to a normal place in twenty-one.
Um, and then, um, transportation's up quite a bit, but that's in the low number in the early, so it doesn't but that's a big
That's just, no, it's a fifteen hundred dollar increase on a total budget increase, so much more than that.
The percentages can sometimes be deceiving, right?
So the percentage there is, is, sounds high at nineteen percent, because the base year was eight thousand dollars. It's just
Right.
Those funds were a pay cost.
Mm-hmm.
We're actually two thousand dollars.
And then page three, I mean, if anyone has other big questions on page two?
I can take them, I say now.
Let's look at, can we look at the classroom teachers, definitely, teachers, those two line items, you wanna, is there any discussion of that? On page two.
Yeah.
Page two. Yeah, those are big chunks.
Yeah.
That's, that's our, what we need as well of our teachers, or the majority of our teachers. Right. And if you see those four point some things are consistent on educator lines. Right, so our contract settled out with a two and a half percent cola, which we projected to be a four percent overall, it's got the column. And if we are exceeding that, we can assume that there are significant column moves that built in. And then on page three?
Or people moving through steps.
Instructional technology. Is the last chunk.
And, and just, just one other thing, the total salary pool overall, or personnel pool is three point eight percent. So it's pretty much straight in line with the real word, coming out of the budget, which is not surprising, it's a number one cost. So you will see, just to echo what Pam said, individual lines that might be higher based on somebody moving from column or going through steps, et cetera, so just wanna reiterate that. Go ahead.
Page three is instructional technology?
Yes. So instructional technology is an area where we are, we've moved quite a bit towards level, trying to level out our spending. We, but this is one example where we have a lease community that we have to step up for. We have moved to have we had quite a bit of technology put into the bishop over the past two or three years. So this is really just to replace some items that we currently have. We have home books throughout the middle school, and most home books, I call it, at the end of the school.
I'm just thinking, you know, we're always going to have equipment that's part of the upcoming budget.
Yes.
Is there any, I'm just trying Is there any, I'm just trying to see where we can maybe find some money. Is there any way we can find some money maybe there?
So that, that doesn't involve any new items that we don't already have, it's replacement or it's just that we're just going to on-site. So it's not, it's not an addition of units.
And this isn't where the money goes.
Oh yeah, but I've spent time, whatever, I think.
The money's in healthcare, and the money is in out-of-district placements. That's where the big levels are. So I think a reduction of twenty thousand dollars in home boards doesn't hurt more than it helps.
Doesn't.
It's going to hurt because it's another catch-up. Anything we take out of here is going to be a catch-up that we're building in down the line.
So I, I also should say, in my explanation of kind of how we are where we are, in attempting to take that million and a half out of budget over the last couple of years because of the healthcare hit, really obliterated our flexibility and flexibility to assume things like out-of-district placements and other things like that. So, you know, those things on the margin aren't on the margin. They, they have a very deleterious effect.
And then can we look at page one revenue numbers, chapter seventy?
Yeah.
It probably doesn't.
So we did talk about, the chapter seventy assumption hasn't changed since the tentative budget. What we reviewed at that time is that there have been many multi-year discussions about adjustments to the chapter seventy formula because districts across the state have been telling the legislature that the cost assumptions in the formula have not kept pace with the realities, particularly around health insurance, special education, other areas. There is a bill to redo that formula over time and to add in money over time primarily that those funds are going to lower in districts. We have been assuming what we believe is what we are in line to receive, which is the minimum aid, just based off the community income levels. And that's why we are going to have a six percent increase in the budgetary number. So at this point, we don't expect to do much better than that, but it's really too early to say. On the transportation side, we do get regional transportation aid. That's an area where we've been hearing. First of all, there was, as I talked about in tentative budgets, we have brought the number up to be in line with the prior year. There has been a little bit of additional money that's gone in there in the past year or so. But then there's also discussion, including some coverage over time on the phase in process for out-of-district special education tuition. So if a student goes out of district and we have to transport them, there is discussions about having a phase in. Reimbursement for that, potentially twenty-five percent in the first year. So we have a small increase in there to account for that as well.
So we counted for every revenue dollar that might eventually. We could get surprised if this underlying mechanisms of the formula bring the value reward, but we're not counting on it. The preliminary numbers won't be out for a few weeks. If we do get a significant amount of money that we're not projecting, there's a process that we need to go through to show how we'll be spending that money to address achievement gap issues. We'll have, and we also have to formulate a plan to submit to the state for what we're going to do with our new terms. There'll be a short form for districts like ours, and a long form for districts that are receiving multiple like fifty-three dollars. I'll be at a meeting this Friday with legislators and next week I'm at a meeting with reps from the DEFC to talk about how this is going. Because for districts like ours, that really, we're staying low. I think one of the major factors why we're not seeing anything out of student opportunity, you touched on it, it's, it's our financial status. But it's also our enrollment status, we're full health on this because our enrollment has actually declined over time. And one of the proposals of the formula was to adjust everything and true up people to their enrollment, so we could have lost dollars. So I think this is conservative. It probably will only go up from here, but I think nobody really knows what to expect. And everything is qualified by if funding, so we have to fund all the things that they promised them. So stay tuned on it, but maybe.
In a typical year, you'll get governor, then this senate, then the house, and then a, a committee process to reconcile the numbers. And then follows a great predictable timeline. Because of some of these changes this year, we have less visibility of the types of things that we're hearing and that those are, I think, so we've been discussing and reflecting in the budget.
You can keep going, I'm happy to keep going question by line. I think the big picture on this is where we started, which is coming off the override, we've had two pretty significant events that just required us to spend, reorganize our spending and kind of put resources into closing that very, very long. And we did a million and a half in two years and now we're getting, now we're getting hit with some significant out-of-district placement costs. Again, it's not volume, it's cost replacement. Several of them upwards of two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars per year. It's just money that's being drawn out of our budget and put into another place. So the spending within really hasn't changed. In fact, it probably declined because we've slashed expense budgets for all of the schools. But money is going, is being siphoned to other locations other than the program itself.
Yeah, and, and I want to be clear, I want to be clear about the out-of-district. Those are our kids.
Definitely.
You know, we have an obligation to those kids. But the problem is we obliterated our flexibility in attempting to take care of our healthcare surprise internally. And I think that's kind of the bottom line. We like to have a little bit of flexibility, we pride ourselves in building budgets that give us a little bit of flexibility. But when you're hit with a million and a half in healthcare surprise that no one could have forecast in two years, it hurts. So with that.
And one thing to mention too, just because I think we don't talk, always talk about quality of the program when we're talking about the budget, is the million and a half didn't come out of thin air. It came out of the long-term planning for reorganizing, use of staff and making shifts and funding new, new programs and new initiatives. We can use the often discussed, well, council for the bridge program is an example, or something like the Mathtrader. Like even though we have it fully formed, but we want out of Mathtrader and Math Coach, we had a long-term plan that as enrollment declined, completely projecting, see that it was open to. Instead of making rec adds to the budget, we could shift FTE into new areas to kind of expand areas of opportunity we broke. So the million and a half would close the gap, but it also shut down all of our development protection.
Annie, did you have another question?
Yeah, so I'm not really, I don't really want to borrow three seventy-five for reserves. So I'm, I'm wondering if you can explain to me what the parameters are, the limitations of using capital or stabilization funds for things like facility gaple spreads? So I mean, I know you think I'm nickel and diming you, but I just really am worried about taking that big chunk out of reserves.
I think the problem there would be that, that capital pot earmark for capital for Essex elementary. And I think we, so again, we torpedo our flexibility for Essex elementary.
No, I'm saying this line item, sixty-four K.
What, what page?
Page three. Why can't, why are we not allowed to use, you can't stabilization for that kind of, you know what I mean? Like there's very limited things we can do with stabilization. Can we take those things out of the, what is the, what is it state, if we take it out of operating?
It will have the same effect mathematically, you know, it's concerned initially from a different source because you'll lower your operating budget, which will mean we won't use as much reserves. It's spending out of stabilization, it just won't be the reserve funds that we have, so it'll come down that way, so.
So I'm just dropping here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just deciding what you'll use it for.
Then just move the pots for Ellen.
It's a shell game.
And typ- typically that's how we would operate anyway. You're not going to start earmarking reserves for staff expenses. You're going to put them on critical purchases, supply purchases, things that if, that has to get cut, it's a thing we won't have and not a person will have to go or program will pass.
Well, I guess I can argue that, you know, we can say we'll use some reserve funds, but I think we can also say how much. I don't, I have not calculated three seventy-five reserves. I know how I love to taste a lot of reserves.
I know, I know.
But I'm, I mean, it's just, just jumped from.
Yep, and that's the problem with your line, you know, that's the problem with using reserves, it's snowballs.
I, I, we're in the same place you are every year.
No, I know, no, I know, so I.
We're going to fight.
I think we all agree, we are going to fight. I think we all agree that we don't want program to be cut or class sizes to go up. And we've, we've talked about this for five years, and I think the towns from Monday we're hearing that last year, we keep submitting. Yeah. They know the situation we're in, they can help us this year, but I think that they're trying to forecast and budget so the next coming years that they will have more to help us with. So that that three seventy-five, whatever we take out of reserves won't be.
But if it's three seventy-five this year, look at the jump that it took from one to three. And I'm just saying, next year, you're not going to have any reserves.
And all goes about recently, they're reserves almost.
It's probably worth looking at the reserves. What do you mean?
Our reserves are at the street.
Yeah, but they won't be if we keep eating it.
And we're able to take.
Well, no, but, but like you said, it's part of a larger conversation.
This is like a larger conversation.
I, I don't think we can override next year.
No, we're not overriding with the towns, we haven't been talking about it.
No, we're not overriding.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that word.
No, you shouldn't. It's part of a larger conversation we've been having in terms of long-term planning with the towns and with the towns.
Right, yeah.
And it's part of a larger conversation we've been having in looking at possibly helping us in the avenues. It's a big help. But it's not, it's not coming as a surprise. This is a conversation we've been having for a couple of years, when, when we're setting this down.
So we have a reserve page, page that we can go over, but we put it, we guys put together a little bit of capital over here.
Okay.
Because, um, that's exactly.
So the capital's back and it's just one.
Exactly, the essence of elementary playground. So the capital piece is, we kind of have a, two panels in the budget, so on operating, we are working behind the goal, right? So we're trying to make up on, in capital, we are having, our reserves are very high, we need to reserve for years. We'll go through that in a minute. But are, we have expensive capital for investment. So we're able to talk about things like replacing the Eagles Nest playground while at the same time worrying about how we're going to end with the operating budget because we tend not to want to cross those two lines and use too much of reserves to go as to the operating budget. At the same time, we're also having a revenue source funneling into capital for the interest project when we had decided with both towns that that would stay in the bucket of capital investment. So people will hear this discussion and think they're going to get lip glossed because we're talking about deficit on one side and having to spend out of reserves on the other because they are starting to get quicker. So that's where the two different stories may be in the middle, and one can help the other. So to, to Annie's concern about depleting our reserves too quickly, I think it's, it's important to look, how do you go through the capital piece? And give you a sense of where the reserves are.
Okay.
So.
You're on page, page six, right?
This is, no.
This one.
This is, you know, the reserve page is on the last, it probably, if you indulge, we just go through a couple of quick slides first and try to get to the first line of how those reserves could be used. But I think we've talked in prior meetings, including our district improvement plan, about how to, what our facility planning process is like. And it's been great having Jason here. He's really only been here a short amount of time, he's been through the ground running. But we did promise that we would bring up some of the facility planning and capital funding and capital asset needs as part of this budget cycle. It's part of every budget cycle that we look at the short term, but we're trying to start to move it further down the road as well. So very quickly, we have started, we've made a lot of progress on our routine maintenance. We traded in some, we did a restructuring in the custodial department to get maintenance FTEs and kind of go paid off terrifically. We also have a more order system, so we've seen, we feel like we're on top of that in a way that's great organized and systematic. On the preventative maintenance, moving to the more proactive side, we dedicate a portion of that FTE on the maintenance side to that. We also are starting to put new procedures in, because I'm not going to leave them all now. But that basically getting to how do we take what we already do and make it a little bit more proactive with calendaring and budget encumbrance so that we can have the money set aside at the start of every fiscal year to do the things that we know that are coming. And so that's been moving along well, and Jason's helping us along the same path with facilities, trying to kind of make that last work. We also have the maintenance operations and maintenance plan that came with this building. It's a very detailed plan that came about all the inventory of this building and we're using it to mark out what we have and what we still could care of. You know, somebody asked a question earlier about how do we take care of the things that we do have, and that's a big part of it. So then the next step really is about doing facility conditions indexes. Everyone remembers the Habee's report that we had got, which gave us a sense of what we wanted to do with the elementary schools. We use that to go to MSBA and say, we think we have building replacement that is worthy of your attention. They made us pick one project. The numbers in Habee's report are quite clear, the more schools, about two and a half times more costly in terms of the problems that were there. But we submitted a request to get Essex in the pipeline for the grant program as well. And as we've discussed, at some point we think, once the memorial project wraps up, because MSBA will only funnel it at a time, we believe Essex will be ready for discussion immediately thereafter. On the middle school, high school side, we are using more internal process for the facilities condition index. And Jason's been great in a short amount of time, going area by area through this building, getting quotes, getting numbers, trying to see what it might take to make sure we are on top of things. You've heard, you say it for a while now, that this building is already ten years old, but having a great teammate here who's great experience in this area is really great. We're still going through that process, it's, it's really going to take a little bit more time to give you some proof, use some of the things we know about in the short term. At some point, you know, down the road, you know, halfway through the life of this building, we might want to consider an external facilities condition index. I think it's a little premature now because they are costly and people have a good sense of those. So that's, and then the last step is the capital. That's it, you take the facilities condition index and you turn it into a timeline of life. We have a current process where we take, every year as part of the budget, Jason and the principals will go through and do the whole building and say, what do we think is needed? We'll put it on the list, and then by summer, in fact, this kind of lays it out. By spring, we're already picking which projects we want to prioritize with the sixty thousand dollars that Annie was referring to. So that money goes quick, and every year we are only doing a portion of the items on the list because we only have that money. If we have something that is emergent, absolutely, reserves are good for that. When we have a footbridge problem, reserves, that is something we can do. Now that we have an issue with Eagles Nest, we're expecting fully that reserves will be there for that particular project because that is something we need to do quickly. So, but other than that, we're just looking at our annual allocations. So things that don't get addressed, as I mentioned, they go into next year's process. So here's a quick look at why this keeps. It's just a memory issue. But anyway, this is a quick list in terms of priorities of some of the islands at Essex Elementary and Middle School, High School. Now, obviously, when you're talking about Eagles Nest, I don't know if the number will be, will be up to the school committee as we discussed. But if you're picking up like two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars to the airways, a placeholder, I mean, that goes on the list. We have been talking about turf fields and, and we know it's about five hundred thousand per turf field. With Jason here, I think he's been able to really get into the weeds and challenge, I think, some of the assessments that we've been getting from our, our maintenance companies. We do have a real maintenance planner on both turf fields that we've been doing routinely for many years. But in digging in, getting outsiders to comment on that process, it looks like we can extend the life of Brook Street, which is different than what we initially thought, maybe another three or so years by just doing some enhanced maintenance activities that aren't part of the typical process that our current vendor has been doing.
Is that a shared cost?
Brook Street?
It is intended to be a shared cost, yes, and so right now we're keeping track of all the costs, but I believe when it comes time to replace that turf field, that that will probably be a discussion. Based on a new agreement that does say that it is split based on usage of the field. So that's how the costs are expected to be portioned. Obviously, that will be a discussion to get to Brook Street, you can see Brook Street's a little further down the list, uh, more than three to five. Highland, by contrast, uh, is doing great on things like, uh, compression impact issues and making sure that it's safe to play on in terms of potential impacts. Um, but it's, the design of that field is such that with the seam construction where all the lines that are painted on are all based on the seams, I think I may have talked about this at previous meeting. Uh, basically, it's just not, uh, it's already in here since I think two thousand and ten, we're going about nine plus years out of it. Probably get another year to two years out of it, typically a useful life is about eight, that's what the warranties are, and warranty is always a great proxy for what the manufacturer wants to get. So we've been trying to, we have a program in place, but that field is going to need to go at this point, I think, uh, not this summer, but somewhere after. We've talked in, uh, at tentative budget hearing about heating issues at Essex Elementary, um, we are troubleshooting those as as we go. Uh, we are spending annual maintenance money on that, but in terms of capital side, we would need to invest that boiler there because we have to, the, uh, one was put in, I think two thousand and seven, that's the newer one. And it's, it's running continuously and we need to either invest in the backup one, uh, in a short-term manner, or we need to just get the backup boiler replaced. So a hundred thousand dollars is an estimate, I think we spent that, maybe we get a boiler replacement at Memorial, so that's, uh, reflects some time you have in the past, it's just not really familiar for sure. What we're currently in the process of doing is talking, is just see pros and cons of investing short-term money versus just biting the bullet and getting it going. Again, it's in the backup burner, but we want a boiler, but we want to make sure that we don't have one go down and it's in the middle. So, uh, there's also distribution issues, which is how the heat gets through the buildings and if you remember the story at Memorial School, teachers needing to put their scissors in and trying to turn things on or using their windows as a ventilation method because the heat was either all the way on or all the way off. There are some ventilators in the classrooms that are old and not great at Essex Elementary, we've been spending a little money on those, um, but we might need to spend even more money on that. So that's something that the facilities team has been very involved with, um, so that's something that I think we know we can spend a little per year, um, and maybe that we split over, uh, several years, I think five thousand or more. But that's not replacing them, that's fixing them. Replacing them is probably of the order of about two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, so much.
Ten thousand per.
Ten thousand per. Uh, and then flooring has been something that we've talked about a little bit, if you are in the middle school, you know that we have already replaced the carpet in the pods once. Uh, and then last year we replaced some of the risers, um, they're high-use areas, the design of them with no, is such that they 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 get heavily used. So that's an area where we have to replace it a little bit more quickly and we're doing things over time, what was that?
They'll pick at that too.
Uh, and then there's, you know, I'm not gonna go through all the other items, but, uh, we obviously have a second field that is coming down the pike at some point. Um, furniture at some point in this building will become an issue, we're going through the at at the need furniture fixed equipment process at Memorial School, it's given us some good insight into pricing. Um, but at some point we're gonna need to be ready for things like a classroom chair refresh in this building, uh, things like that. And so we want to be ready when that happens, uh, that could be a few years down the road. But again, this is really intended to look at things that could be coming in the next four to five years and priorities that we just really talk about, things that we know are coming soon, which is things that might take a little longer to to come up. So these items alone, you're already at, um, in this formula, I just, it's not correct because I just resorted these prior to the meeting. And when I resorted them, um, my formula is.
So is that number at the bottom?
It is much higher, just one point eight million, and I apologize, this is what happened to when I make a change.
So it's not one point eight, it's higher than that?
No, it says one point one five and it's.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah, at one point, it is one point eight million dollars.
So it's not one point.
No, one, yes, not one point one eight.
One point eight.
Yeah, I apologize, I did a resort.
Okay, so we're looking at one point eight to spend on, uh, capital needs over five years.
Right, and obviously the higher priority items are more likely to tap into those funds, um, and so, but we we do have a ball of that second turf field stuff. So when we talk, I think the bottom line, going to the next slide is about the the reserves that we do have, this is a slide we showed in the budget diagram. Uh, ten percent has been typically the guideline of where we ought to be as percentage of budget for reserves. Um, when we went to get our bottom rating, we did upgrade it, um, we heard at least one agency said ten percent was kind of the bare minimum for double A, triple A rated bonds. Um, but obviously we don't, we don't have so much money in the bank that we're starving our new operating program, so that's really the trade-off that we need to talk about. In terms of the increase that happened in fiscal nineteen, uh, I just want to remind people that on the operating side, we really didn't have an increase in reserves as much as we had, uh, construction interest one time for about three hundred nineteen thousand dollars. As well as the reimbursements of the footbridge costs that we had spent in the prior year for that emergency certification. So, um, the budget itself is pretty stable in terms of contributing to these certain things. So clearly we are gonna need to spend some of those funds, we've talked about the fact that we would spend construction interest for facility-related items. We do buy statute, we use some reserves to offset, uh, town assessments. If they go over a certain, uh, uh, percentage, they will go over once we get fiscal nineteen, uh, E and B certified. But they're gonna go out, uh, over in an amount that is not quite the amount of the construction budget, so it's really what we've been talking about all along. Uh, once we get E and B certified, it'll tell us how much we need to give back, quote unquote, to the town and that amount will turn into an equal, a budget adjustment where we will increase our spending to start tackling these capital items and reduce the assessment and buy the excess.
Okay, so we're basically gonna move the funds.
We're gonna spend the money on capital items as we've been talking about before, so giving you indication of what some of those items are going to be.
Okay.
Eagles Nest and the and the turf field, I think are the two most, uh, the the two serious stories.
Okay, the turf field, can that just be handled by Jason and you? Does that have to have a building made and bonded to it?
Through that, that will be handled, yes, and we'll obviously have to do a bid or you state contract, but yes, that is not a typically a community item.
Okay, so.
Although we're happy to take input on any of these items, you know, we can take emails, anyone has suggestions, we're open to them, but it's not a committee process.
That's okay.
You do you.
Because Caroline's gonna be, she's gonna be busy in June.
Yeah.
Um, so this conversation about the operating expenses.
Hmm.
As we talk about taking some of those, uh, I'm sorry, the capital expenses, so as we talk about taking some of that, uh, some of those reserves from capital to pay for capital projects, is the idea to kind of ease some of the operating? Is that where we're going with this, taking, I'm not phrasing this properly, but I think you know what I'm talking about.
So, so we need to.
Yeah, you're saying no.
Well, I I I'm not sure I said that, what I would say is we need to take the reserves, we want to, theory, keep them at a certain level for emergencies. We want to use some of them for these facility capital planning items, we know we need to use some of them for operating, how much is the question that we're kind of bringing to you? And it needs to serve those three purposes, ready day, things we know are coming down the pike and happening down the pike, making sure we don't have to come to our program. Those are the three buckets, is that, if you, any other way you're looking at it that you want?
I think for the twenty eighth, we need to come up with a graphic that shows what's going on, because there is additional revenue that hasn't flowed into this that he's talking about, right? There's an additional five hundred thousand dollars in interest that still hasn't hit the bottom of the year, but it was just a happy investment, it has to pass through a budget first.
So. Isn't that the four eighty nine?
Yeah, I just feel like we're kind of, for people to be able to follow it, this this year's interest.
Yeah, where is that coming from? That's, that's. Oh, this year's, they haven't done it yet, it's the interest on the bond.
Um, so. So. Again, month by month, that's correct, so we haven't completed, so we still have money in the bank for the construction project spending.
Got it. Right, that's the three eighteen.
Correct, and so just as a reminder, when you look at the front page of our operating budget, under revenue, uh, you will see that we have an estimate for interest income. It does not include construction interest, the reason being that we discussed at this committee a year ago, that we did not want, we needed the money in the economy, we don't have a particular market for capital.
For capital.
We didn't want to use the money operating budget. So at this point, we have not increased the fiscal twenty one, uh, or the fiscal twenty estimates to account for any additional interest income that will come from the bonds.
Okay.
We do expect, just as panel's saying, that about three hundred and nineteen thousand fiscal nineteen, probably get a similar amount, maybe slightly more in fiscal twenty, the current year. Because we'll have twelve full months of interest income, whereas in fiscal nineteen, we got four of the bonds in February, so we didn't get a full year of interest income. So we'll have more months, we're also spending down the line, so we'll have more months that will blow up. So we should expect a similar amount, maybe slightly more in fiscal twenty, the current year.
So all in all, that pot, let's say by the end of next year, might look like almost seven hundred grand.
For those two, yeah.
Right, in capital, interesting, so we use that hopefully to fund some of this one point eight.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Correct.
And that's separate, aside from your reserves.
Mm-hmm.
But.
Like, exactly.
But you still, I mean, you still have budget that accounts for that money from that reserves.
The operating, the operating side.
Yeah, and it does not return us, right, and it doesn't.
We still have that gap.
Well, it's helping them the fact that we're not at a hundred percent, so, but it may not help them enough.
So you guys are saying that you're factoring, you're factoring in that we're gonna use some of the reserves, Andy, I think you were saying you can use the reserves.
Not a, not a devil.
Frankly, so when are we gonna get to the point where what if it's a big surprise that all of a sudden we all look at you and you say, we don't want to touch the reserves? I mean, are we all, are we, have we, have we gone, so you can prepare a plan of budget reductions?
I, I think. Yeah, I think we have, I think it's okay to touch the reserves, at least last year it was. I think we have to decide how okay and to what extent we want to touch the reserves this year, also.
We need to go down, I mean, the meeting's gonna go fast, but all of a sudden we can't say, okay, we can only use twenty thousand dollars of it.
Right. So. Right, also knowing we're having these ongoing conversations with the town about the out years.
But what we can use. I think what is my favorite, what we would do.
Well, or we make this, we make this year's decision based on hopefully a plan in the out years.
Oh, absolutely, I agree with you, but I just want, I, this isn't the will of the committee, I mean, does everybody on the committee kind of feel, I mean, I don't think we've talked, but you can feel strongly one way, so what if everyone on the committee feels that way?
Yeah. Right.
Don't have anything to go.
I think that's part of this whole conversation.
You could pull it forward forth and we could adopt a budget, because you're gonna have a public hearing next week, I mean, we can prepare a very high-level budget reduction package, um, in terms of what factors necessary to offset, I mean, that's what we're at, we need to prepare you a budget reduction package to offset the use of, um, reserves, sort of research.
So, so let's say we decide, just for sake of argument, that we don't want to take any more out of reserves, we are still committed to taking a hundred thousand dollars out of reserves every year because of the decision we made last year.
To cut something else, we need to cut in addition a hundred thousand to undo last year's decision.
So does that mean?
So we can give you a two seventy five cut package and a three seventy five cut.
So.
And I thought we directed them, we don't want to cut program, it sounds like that's changing.
But, but let me, but wait, let me flesh this out a little bit further, so maybe I'm not understanding, so last year we committed to a hundred grand out of reserves.
Hmm.
This year, if we don't want to cut any more out of reserves, we still have to make up that hundred grand, right?
Yeah.
So that, that doesn't become two hundred just by virtue of moving the platform.
This year's number is three hundred and seventy five total.
Right, but that, if if we're not talking about taking any more out of reserves to fund the operating budget, this year's operating budget, we've committed to that one hundred thousand every year, correct?
I think.
And it stays one hundred thousand dollars if we don't make any other decisions?
Well.
Correct.
Or if you look at it differently, you could say we didn't commit to a hundred thousand dollars every year, we committed to the hundred thousand dollars for one year and we can put forward a budget that's over three point eight percent that closes the gap and passes it through on incorporation, uh, or passes the cost through.
To the towns.
To the towns and let them run on it for a bit and see what they can add to us with, I mean, that's the other direction.
Mm-hmm.
So we can either increase the annual percentage of spending we've run down to three point eight, we do that, we created the three hundred and seventy five thousand dollar budget gap, which we're proposing to use reserves for. I thought we did here, we didn't want to cut any more teachers or programs.
Yes.
We can also prepare for you a cut package that gives you two seventy five and three seventy five in reductions.
So I think we might want to take a straw poll here and.
So you can see that. I'm still open, I do not want to cut programming or teachers.
Okay.
So I think we're, if everyone, I'm not, if, if a lot of people feel that way, why make them go jump through the hoops and preparing data information if they're.
That's why, yeah, that's why I'm asking, so let's just take a quick poll, straw poll, see where, see how we feel about moving forward with three seventy five. And at this point, that's, we're talking about three seventy five, I mean, we're talking about more or less, we could discuss that later on. Um, all right, so can I see just a quick show of hands on who's okay, well, not okay, but who? I'm not okay, but okay.
I, I'm fine, I guess.
I agree with that.
Um, as I said, I do not want to see cuts to program, so there we go.
Okay, so, so are you okay taking out of reserves?
I'm gonna take it already.
Three hundred and seventy five.
The reserves are there, the reserves are there for us, I know, I know, there are many different programs in the world, and they have been checked well, they are in excess of ten percent, so.
Okay, so I, okay, so I think the majority is already got out of it.
Well, I was just saying, I do want to be just new for the twenty eighth, is prepare a multi-year look at what reserves, reserve use will look like in twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four. And what it might do to the bottom line, holding all of the things constant, and also give you a very high level of, we are a teachers-in-program and the program is gonna attach to an FTE that I can give you the rough, I can give it to you right now, you're looking at about three staff members.
If we don't take it out of it, but.
If you're, if you're gonna try and get it through, through the budget reduction. Didn't we already push up some class size, push up class sizes and deal?
Didn't you already show us that, maybe it was just for the, um, collaboration, that what this would mean for reserves in the out years, didn't, didn't you look at this?
We have the historical.
We went through the multi-year budget process a lot, I can throw that up on the screen if you want to see briefly, but I don't want to.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
But, uh, so I think, and just a couple of other things I'm hearing from super dummies that, uh, in addition to, um, looking at the multi-year operation impact because of the fact that there's three seventy five here. Essentially, three seventy five next year, unless you make a drastic cut next year, there's a little one, we can use the base kicking that came down the road, but there's a multi-year snowball, so that's one thing. Two, is that I think we can talk about including the interest income that we're expecting this year on top of the reserves that we do have and some of the year-term capital items, how that money could come down, uh, to take care of the things we need to take care of and what will be left. And so between those two things that we're really looking at, if we address our capital, which I think we have to do, uh, and also have the operating item, say, short, two- or three-year, hopefully, process of plugging the gap. What does that do for the reserve, I should be able to show that as well.
And I think the other thing we want to articulate is if we took, let's say we did move to take, um, three staff, three FTE staff production. You're starting to create a different deficit that is going to play into the same calculations, so whether it's three seventy five in reserves or three seventy five in staff, you can't, you won't be able to survive long term without that three FTE. So that's going to break into, it will rise or catch up.
That's no loss too. That's no loss too, huh?
So the, it's three hundred, whether it's in column A or column B.
Yeah.
One, you take the short, short-term hit, or possibly long-term hit to the program, one, you take it to financial page.
Right, but then, uh, we go through the school and then obviously the people show up and then we have to hire six more teachers instead of just three more teachers and it's.
Mm-hmm. Would you indulge me and just see if I can find some savings? And just see if we can find some savings somewhere.
Of course, you need to keep doing that.
So that we're not. I'm, I know.
Hey.
I'm asking them, okay?
Hey. Of course.
If you have anything in mind for us to look at.
Yeah.
Um.
I'll do that.
A teacher. I, I'm, I can, I, I am, I am, I am worried about taking that kind of money out of.
We all are.
We all are.
We all are.
Oh, you guys just spent it.
I think we can also look at the source.
Wanton spenders.
I think we were using five and six hundred figures back in the, in the.
We were. We were. Yeah, I know, I didn't, that wasn't it either.
But, I know, but we, we made it out of it, we said we weren't going to do it anymore and here, and here we are again.
Yeah. Not that silly for you, Seth.
So all kind of.
We're going to have, we have money to pay for the Eagles Nest, which is the bottom line.
Now, look at it.
Okay.
So we can beat this one to death, but I think we know where we're going.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Um. Hmm? I do?
Only if it's, if it's appropriate time.
Go ahead, we're, we're well past where we should be in what's up.
I'm sorry, do you get? Um, just so people know, Shoshi, my son's at Memorial in second grade, um, so I have personal interests. I'm also a one-term educator, started in nineteen ninety-four. Um, so I believe in the profession, I believe in teachers, I'm one of them. Um, so two questions and a comment.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess the first two, Abhi, to you, um, enrollment has been dropping a bit and probably could, for, mm-hmm, so many years, especially since that level will be graduating. What kind of impact will that have on the, obviously, it impacts both money coming in and the money spent. And then the other part of that is with an efficient building at Memorial soon, okay? Um, how will that impact? Will that be a positive? I'm just thinking, I know Andy and others are concerned about using reserves, but will that spending come down? And then back to you, if someone could comment.
So, uh, on the, excuse me, on the, um, memorial side, uh, we actually have been discussions with the project team about what some of those impacts are going to be. There'll definitely be a more energy-efficient building. Typically, what you see is that, um, your heating costs go way down, your electricity cost goes significantly up because of the cost to run the types of systems, but it's a net savings. Um, I believe that's correct. You'll still not be have anything like, we're basically heating the outdoors around the area, so that will be better. And it's also the design, it's not sprawling. Uh, there is going to be a slightly larger footprint. You know, at some point, we might need to think about what the right, uh, custodial FTE is. That's, we're just a little too early to get into that, but that could be something coming down the road. You know, Jason's asked me to kind of keep my eyes open about that. Um, and, um, the first part of your question is.
Enrollment.
Enrollment.
How would the enrollment, I'm just thinking people are concerned about the next three to five years. If enrollment drops, is that a help in any way or no, because of the funding rates, I don't know how that works.
Uh, the funding we get per student is really from the state, which is a small portion of our overall budget. And they tend to not take away money, they tend to just not give you much. Uh, but, uh, inside, we have, uh, in the past, used any reductions in enrollment to help us with budgetary gaps, so that has been a little bit of a source. It's also helped us to invest in program changes that we needed to do, what if we didn't have an opportunity to cut? So it could provide some flexibility.
Past three years has been straight cuts.
Okay.
So we've reduced, I don't know if you have it handy, um, I see, we can't remember the numbers. We've reduced a different amount of staff. So I, I mean, I'm looking at the memorial numbers right now, we're kind of at the, the tipping point where if we go down another classroom, then we're going to push up too high and we're going to be pushing right around twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, where Essex is at the fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Yeah.
So we're balanced right now.
Okay.
So the other issue that we've run into is we've taken, um, retirements through, we take, took reduction through attrition. It's really been coming from the elementary, but the problem is there's still a large bubble here. So what we lost was our ability to move that FTE up to help at the middle school and to invest in the intervention structure and support structures that exist at the elementary. So we're kind of, we're chipping away at any opportunity we have to bless facilities, so I'm very concerned with eliminating any more FTE. Because even if we can take a reduction in one location, we need it someplace else.
I agree, yeah. Yeah, no, and I, I, so my, my comment is just to all of you, I know that they're really hard decisions and you can't look at just this year, you're looking beyond, of course, I'm thinking personally about my son and my kids. Um, but I also know as a teacher that class size has a significant impact on the educational experience. So when you're making those hard decisions, I'm here speaking for many others, just saying, please keep that in mind. Um, it impacts such students for it to differentiate and, um, so many, so I might just, we'd love to see that held on to the small class size. I know cutting programs, the word program is so many different things to so many different students. So, you know, having to think about what's going to happen, lose educational impact, because they're all going to have an impact, but so we'll forward to be part of those conversations in the next two years.
Thank you, and we do appreciate that, and many of us are here because our kids were in big classes when they were younger. So that's why we've done the poll.
Thanks, Abby.
Um, all right, so with that, um, do we want to talk about the, uh, collaboration, regionalization opportunities? Is that something, or do we want to kick it to, uh?
I think we can kick it.
Let's kick it, okay. Um, any school community comment? All right, go ahead.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is at Essex Elementary School, not here.
Oh, yeah, that's right, thanks.
Yep.
Public hearing, this is on the.
Yep.
Public hearing on the budget and a little more discussion on the rest. Uh, I believe, where, where we're.
Well, I'd say let's start at five thirty or six, so we can do our business items and then go public hearing at seven. So if we started at five thirty or six o'clock, we have a program studies and I'll do goals, okay? That's all the business we have in the center.
Yeah, what point do we want to talk about the Eagles Nest in that?
You could do it as part two of a public hearing.
Okay.
So if you ask us people, the public hearing starts at seven. For the budget.
We're talking about the twenty-eighth. Yeah, okay.
Yes, and then you could do ask each playground this first or second agenda, you tell me if you want to.
Um, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a second. Okay, I already know the motion carries.